Okay, good evening, everyone. This is Dr. Gonzalez Orlando Gonzalez. I'm acting Chair for probably the first 10, 20 minutes of this meeting. Calling the meeting to order today is Tuesday, September 6th. And I'd like to ask everyone to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the
United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God. Liberty, justice.
Okay, Cam, sanction announcement.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. This planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference open to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter and posted with the city clerk on September 2nd, 2022. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage and all distribution materials were made available to the board were also made available to the public and published accordingly.
Thank you, Cam. We'll do a roll call.
Certainly. Okay, so. Commissioner Lipsky.
Present.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Present.
Commissioner Acting Vice Chair Commissioner Gangadin.
Here. I didn't know I was acting.
I was gonna say you're probably not.
Surprise right there.
For 10 minutes only.
Commissioner Green.
Present.
And Acting Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Okay, we have five commissioners present.
Hey, Cam. Mark me down for here as well. I just got brought out with the dog.
Okay, and Chairman Langston. Okay, we have six commissioners present. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Cam. Matt, you want to swear in the staff? Mike, I'm sorry. Where is he? There he is.
Sure, I see Cameron Mallory, Tanya, Tim, Matt. Do you guys want any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Cam, any correspondence?
Yes, we do. We have one request from an applicant and their attorney. That is item 17 on the agenda. Address is 420 Ogden Avenue, a minor subdivision. Their attorney communicated with me that they are requesting to carry with preservation of notice to the September 20th meeting. So again, that's item 17, address 420 Ogden Avenue, and they are requesting to be carried with preservation of notice to September 20th.
Okay, noted. Thank you. Okay, anything else, Cam? I could jump right in.
Yep, that's it.
Okay, so we'll call our first case is P22-138. This is a one-year extension, address 30 River Court, applicant TA Pool LLC.
Promoting Maria P. Vallejo.
There she is.
There you are. Thank you, very much appreciated Chairman or Acting Chairman, Commissioners, Council and Planning Board staff. I appreciate your time tonight. My name is Maria Vallejo from Chatham Lamparello Malacampuzo on behalf of TA Pool LLC. Commissioner, do you want me just go forward and give my very short presentation?
Yes, counsel, ready when you are.
Great, thank you. So this is an application for a one-year extension on a final site plan that was approved on the construction of a residential swimming pool. As the Commissioner had mentioned, it's located at 30 River Court, block 7302, lots 33, 34, 44, 45, 46 and 58. The swimming pool is specifically for the residents of East Hampton Apartments, Southampton Apartments, Atlantic Apartments and Riverside Apartments. I filed the one-year extension along with a copy of the resolution granting the preliminary and final site plan application. And as you can see from the resolution, it was this plan in this project was fully compliant, no variances, waivers or exceptions necessary. And it promotes the goals of the redevelopment plan. The application was approved and that was memorialized by resolution on October 13th, 2020. As such, the approval has a vesting period of two years, which would take it to October 12th, 2022. The municipal land use law, section 52 specifically authorizes this board to grant a one-year extension of all final approvals. This construction was delayed as a result of the impact of the pandemic as well as increased cost of construction and some technical difficulties which we now believe have been resolved. Along with coordinating with various entities and utilities. And we think we can hopefully move forward if not by the end of year, by the beginning of next year, and that's the reason why we're asking for the one-year extension. We think this is a good project. And as a result, we hope that this board will grant that one-year extension for final site plan approval.
Ms. Vallejo, what was the, what were the dates again that you said?
Sure. So the resolution was October 13th, 2020. So the two-year would expire in October 12th, 2022. So we filed this prior to that.
Okay. Is that your presentation, counsel?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Anyone?
No.
Okay, we'll open it up for public. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak on P22-138? Please raise your hand. Or dial what number, Cam? I always forget.
Um. I forgot to.
Star nine.
Yeah, yeah. Or.
One, any, any public?
Jersey, no more public. I'd like to make a motion to close the public.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to close the public. Public is now closed. And Cam, this is yours.
Yep, planning staff recommends approval with all of the existing conditions under the original approval to remain in effect. Also, I'd just like to note that Commissioner Cruz has joined us. So we have seven members present.
Welcome, Commissioner Cruz. Okay, thanks, Cam. Counsel Vallejo, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P22-138 as presented to the board this evening, which was previously approved under case number P-20056 with existing conditions.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. On a motion to approve. I'm gonna start with the Vice Chair, Acting Vice Chair Gangadin.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Acting Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, next case moving right along is case P22-109. This is for the two one-year extensions. Address is 684-700 Newark Ave. Applicant is Eastern International College. This is for block 6502 lots 12 and 13.01.
All right, promoted Thomas Lee.
Good evening, good evening, Commissioners. I noticed for this case out of an abundance of caution, I don't believe I was required to, however, I did submit an affidavit and I just want to make sure counsel is in receipt.
Evening, counsel. I am in receipt of an affidavit notice. I don't believe it is required for this. However, it is thorough as always, counsel, so we will mark it as a one for the record.
Thank you very much. The application tonight is for an extension of approval granted by this board back in 2019. It was for a parking lot and landscaping for Eastern International College, which is located on Newark Avenue. It is a higher level, a school of higher, higher level, and they did require some parking on site due to the fact that they were increasing their faculty and student population. It ultimately was for 39 new parking spaces as well as new landscaping buffers around that parking area. And there were variances granted for the required open space and lot coverage. As we're all aware, COVID was especially difficult on schools and they were unable to commence this project prior to the expiration, which was in October 29th of 2021. We are asking for a two-year extension as if this was approved tonight, we would really only have about 60 days to move forward with the project before we'd be right back in front of the board. It is my understanding, my client already has a contractor, is already preparing to file for permits. So this project would probably begin by the end of the year and we're just looking for that two years until next year to complete.
Okay, counsel, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lee?
I have a question. Where was the parking on that block?
There was originally a small parking area for the school, but it only accommodated a few spaces. I can't recall how many were there. This increased the school's parking capacity by about 39 spaces. But it was interior and located on the area that is where this lot is proposed, but for the most part, the area surrounding it was unpaid. It was unimproved. It wasn't suitable for, for parking uses by the school. The approval here tonight allowed us to expand that area and really build out a proper parking.
You couldn't, Dr. Desai?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I know the idea, so.
Yeah, Ms. Lee, what are the dates that you're seeking approval to?
Yeah, so this did expire on October 29th of 2021. One years would bring us up to October 29th of this year. The two years would put us into October 29th of 2023.
Is there a reason why we didn't, did you, were you on the docket earlier or?
Yeah, my client didn't probably realize that it expired until about May. Once he contacted me, I immediately filed a letter on May 30th. I think just because the schedule has been so full, this might just have not made it onto the docket. I wanted to notice for this. I was originally going to be heard at the last hearing, but out of, like I said, out of abundance of caution, I did notice. So that's the reason we got pushed back a little bit late.
Okay, very well. Okay, that's your presentation, sir?
That's, that is all. Yep.
Okay, so I'll open it up for public now. This is for KHP22-109. Is anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this? This is your opportunity.
Public, I'd like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, public is now closed. And anything, who's the, Tom?
Um, yes, so.
Oh.
Only going to add that the original conditions remain in effect under this extension and other than that, planning staff recommends approval.
We agree to that condition.
Okay.
Yeah, anything else, Mr. Lee, that you need to add?
That's it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P22-109 as presented to the board this evening, which was also previously approved under case P1A-159 with all existing conditions.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded.
All right, Acting Vice Chair Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Acting Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Cam, I apologize. I think I called you Tom. I'm not sure why.
Well, it's the same number of letters as Cam and it both, they end with an M.
Yeah, sorry about that. Man, all right, let's see if, just seeing if Chairman Langston is back before we get in. Guess not. Okay, I'll call the next case onto new business. Case P22-122. This is number nine on the agenda.
Dr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Can we skip to the section 30, section 31 application? And go back to this after that?
Sure. That's wrong. Chairman Langston is okay with that and he's not here, so. Okay, yeah, so strike that. The new business, we're moving on to case P22-093. Again, this is number 10 on the agenda for section 31 review. Address is 153 Phillips Street, applicant Hudson County Schools of Technology. Block 21504 lot B.
Thank you, Doc, and just let the record show him back. I'm in the room.
Perfect. You're, so you're running this?
Um, yeah, I just have to dry the dog off.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
I promoted Ralph Walker. Did, Valerie, do you recognize Ralph Walker as a member of the?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see a Jack Denon.
John.
John R. Dean in Hudson County Schools.
Okay, okay, there we go, yep.
Mr. Dean, if you're there, you're muted. There we go.
And there we go. Good evening. My name is Jack Dean. I represent the Hudson County Schools of Technology. We're here tonight pursuant to a section 31 review, which is pursuant to 40, 55D 31, requiring the planning board to evaluate the consistency of the site proposal when dealing with the expenditure of public funds. With respect to that, we do have in our possession the city planning report dated today from Mallory Clark Sokoloff, dealing with their review for consistency. And with the pleasure of the board, I can abbreviate this. We have one witness, Ralph Walker. But it's at your can, you know, your decision as to how you want us to proceed.
Mr. Dean, I'm gonna go ahead and take this opportunity to, to, to send it back to Chairman Langston, who is very good at what he does. So he's gonna take over now as chairman, but I also need you to go ahead and turn your camera on. We can't see you. At least I can't.
Well, you know, it's funny because my camera is turned on. And I don't know why you can't see me here.
Yeah, we have a black screen, Mr. Dean.
Yes, I understand that.
Sometimes there's a shutter at the top of your computer screen and there's usually like a little switch above it.
Shutter at the top of my
Yeah, wherever the light is that shows your cameras on, a lot of the times right above that, there's a tiny little shutter that you can slide back and forth. It might have just gotten slid to cover the camera lens.
There you go.
You are brilliant. Today, so. I didn't want to tell you you had a cover on the lens. So Chairman, as I said, by way of background, this process is a process that you're all familiar with. In 2015, the master plan actually had the SciTech redevelopment plan in which they reviewed an application to have, in fact, a high school situated within this zoning district. If you go to their website now, you will note that the plans that you saw, the diagrams of those plans still exist today as part of the proposal. Less than, or maybe a little more than a year ago, you may remember there was a return to this board requesting a subdivision, setting forth the lot lines and description of the property for construction of this school. In May of 2021, your master plan review has 97 areas that are part of a redevelopment plan, one of which is number six, which is this Liberty Harbor of which SciTech is also a part. What applied then applies now. And I think what your planner, Ms. Clark Sokoloff has indicated is certainly from this board's actions in the past and its master plan and redevelopment plan citing the school there is certainly consistent for purposes of taking this matter to the Department of Education and the Comptroller, who ultimately decide how this project moves forward. Subject of course, as Ms. Clark Sokoloff pointed out, continuing interaction with RSC architecture with respect to some of her concerns as she mentions in her report. So without further delay, and I know you have a busy schedule tonight, I'd call Ralph Walker, the architect, and he can go over generally what's being proposed without getting too deep into the master plan, why it's consistent, why it's part of the existing redevelopment plan.
Sure, being that we're under a section 31 review here, let's try and keep it as brief as possible, but yeah, we certainly want to see everything and you know, this is also for the public's information as well, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's do a brief presentation and we'll render a decision.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Let me just chime in since I get paid to talk. It is a section 31. We all know that the question to the board is consistency with the master plan and for public edification. The final rendition of this project may not be what we see tonight. As I understand it, if it's found that this is consistent with the master plan, the next step in the process is to go to the Department of Education. I don't even want to imagine what could happen there and the changes that could be made to Mr. Walker's proposal. And if we find that it's inconsistent with the master plan, this project will still go to the Department of Education and will continue to proceed. So it is a courtesy review under the case law and under section 31 of the statute, which is why it's called a 31 review. But it is for consistency with the master plan. And therefore, let's hear and see the drawings Mr. Walker has prepared and how they are consistent with the master plan, very much in the manner in which you described only through Mr. Walker's testimony. Thank you, Mr. Lampy. Can we swear in Mr. Walker, please?
Please.
All right, Mr. Walker, swear in if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, it's Ralph Walker, R-A-L-P-H-W-A-L-K-E-R.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
When were you first licensed?
I, I received my license in 2003.
That's fine, counsel. You're qualified, Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I, I can do the presentation very briefly if you'd like, Jacob, and run through the, through the exhibits quickly, so.
As we all know, lawyers can only get in the way. I'm willing to push the shutter to the side again and allow you, Walker, please.
Very good. If I should be allowed to share my screen, I'm happy to bring up the exhibits and I'll, I'm gonna keep this brief.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walker. You should have that ability, I think, right?
Yeah, you should be able to. It says that the host has disabled participant screen sharing. Huh, all right, give me a moment there. There you go. All right, very good. Hopefully you all are seeing the site plan rendering that's now up on the screen just before I get
We are, we are, Mr. Walker.
Okay, very good. So to keep this very brief, what we are talking about this evening is the parcel that is shown in the rendered portion of the site plan here. This is block 21504 lot 4.06, which is part of the larger SciTech City redevelopment. This particular parcel is devoted to Liberty Science High School, which will be a wholly operated science and technology high school for approximately 400 students run by Hudson County Schools of Technology. This particular facility is designed in a manner both to accommodate their long-term needs for the high school and also be a complement to the overall SciTech City redevelopment, which includes other facilities outside of the scope of this application. I'm gonna limit my, my review of the proposal to the site plan and then to the renderings. I'm happy to go to any other exhibits if there are specific questions from the Commissioners as we go forward, but just to keep it very brief. So I will jump ahead then to the actual renderings of the, of the proposed building. Building, as you can see here, this is a view of the proposed facility as seen from, from one corner of the site looking in a southeast direction. This would be the approach onto the property from the interior roadway towards the main entry. This is what you're seeing in the foreground is the bus drop-off for the building itself. The building is a four-story building. It's three full, three fully built out levels with a partial fourth level. The partial fourth level includes the observatory, which you see in the foreground currently. And the other three levels include classrooms, media center, lab spaces, administrative spaces, gymnasium, cafeteria and other school, school-related amenities. Moving around the facility, this is a, this is a perspective looking from the opposite direction towards the northeast. What you're seeing here in the foreground of this is the footprint of two other proposed buildings as part of the SciTech City redevelopment plan. They're outside of the scope of this work. I only highlight them to highlight the interior pedestrian walkway, which is part of the overall redevelopment plan here. This school actually has kind of two faces, one face towards the, towards the parking area, another face that is out towards the interior walkway and is meant to be part of an integrated portion of the overall SciTech City redevelopment plan. This building is intended to house three primary programs, astrophysics, biology, and sustainable engineering. That'll be the primary curriculums of these high school students. And it's integrated with the other development in the area, including Liberty Science Center and the ongoing programs there with the planetarium and their lab space, the work at Liberty State Park and some of the environmental work that's happened there. And then also with the balance of the SciTech City redevelopment, which includes the Edgeworks Project, which is an incubator for new technologies in the areas of biotech. So we've really worked hard at trying to create something that's going to be part of this overall campus. Here's another view of the same building. This one is looking from the area that will be eventually developed as part of the residential piece, and you can see we're using a combination of some glass and metal skin elements, curtain wall elements. You can see there's a number of outcroppings or balcony areas that we're using to create new corridors for the students to understand their context of where they're at and really trying to create a handsome building that's going to have a long-term impact on the overall area. I think with that, I'll pause here again in order to keep this brief. I'm happy to come back to any particular portion of my presentation. And if there's any specific items that you'd like me to speak about, I'm happy to respond.
All right, thanks, Mr. Walker. I have no questions per se. I do have a suggestion. I see that there's I see that there's eighty bike parking spots. You know, obviously, there's more steps after us. I think we could do better on that number, being that this you know, there's a large number of Jersey City residents that are going to be going to this school.
Yeah, this is a, it's a four-hundred-person school. I should have said before as well, we are planning to be lead accredited as part of the overall planning. And we are looking carefully at our sustainable criteria for all portions of the building, not just the bike parking, but we can certainly take that under advisement.
No, I would appreciate that. I know it's, you know, we can't command, we can't wave our hand and make that happen tonight, but you know, I think that's something that should be looked at for the future.
Understood.
I have no questions. Anybody else from the board?
Chair, I do agree with your statement in regards to the bike, because a lot of students may be riding back to school, back and forth to school as well, so.
I would hope so.
Consideration, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Any questions? Okay, so, Mr. Walker, if that's your testimony, I'll go back to Mr. Dineen. Anything you'd like to close up with, sir?
Well, I just want to point out, as you all are aware of, Jersey City, the mayor and yourselves have come up with a comprehensive innovative plan to develop jobs for the future, educating all Hudson County students. This campus will be a synergy for the students and residents of Hudson County. Schools of Technology is a blue-ribbon district that teaches, educates, and provides opportunities that otherwise aren't available to them in Hudson County. I thank the board for its work in the past, its foresight, its wisdom and vision. And with that, I conclude our remarks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dineen. We appreciate it. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here, I see one hand raised already. Anybody's here who would like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Promoted Irene. Irene, if you're there, you can unmute.
Hi Irene, can you hear me?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm having a little bit of difficulty with my internet connection.
No problem. I just want to swear in before you speak, all right? Raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
It's Irene Borengraber, I.R.E.N.E.B.O.R.N.G.R.A.E.B.E.R. My personal address is five oh eight Palisade Avenue, and I'm speaking on behalf of Liberty Humane Society located at four eighty Johnston Avenue and two three five Jersey City Boulevard.
Thank you.
Irene, good evening. Always a pleasure to see you.
Hey, Chris, how are you? Oh, I know, I know the feeling.
Three minutes for you, Irene.
All right.
How appropriate.
Right, exactly, fitting. I do have a few questions, because as you may be aware, Liberty Humane Society is the closest contiguous operating neighbor to this section of the Science and Technology District Plan. So we are your closest neighbor aside from the MUA for the development of the high school. We have no issue with the development of the high school or the bulk of the plan, but I do have a few questions for you regarding the location of the fence line. Currently, you may or may not realize that there is a fence line that provides access that Liberty Humane Society uses to access the back of our property and the spectra easement, which is referenced. You can clearly see it on page eighteen of your plan. The section that I'm specifically speaking about is this small rectangle right along the top. It's this awkward little yellow rectangle that kind of dies at the back of our property. That, if I'm reading your plan appropriately, contains a fence that's going to be removed, but is also not slated to be developed, because it can't be, because of the existence of both the pipeline and then the easement taken by the pipeline. So my request for you is twofold. It really is to ask for consideration for LHS if that property is not to be developed, to continue to allow access for us passive use to walk the dogs in that section, and then also to ensure that the existing boundary is preserved with the fence line. Again, as presented, I see there are significant fences that are coming down, chain-link fences. You can see them more clearly, I think, if you navigate to page two or three. But we just want to make sure that we coordinate with you, one, that there is going to be a fence that delineates. Two, we'd like for it to include the space of that easement, so Liberty Humane Society can have continued access to the space that's undeveloped according to this plan. And we'd also like to request a meeting with you to coordinate and better understand the scope of work, as we do have a twenty-four-seven operation that is considered essential infrastructure for the city of Jersey City. And that's it for me.
All right, thanks, Irene, we appreciate it. I think that's more than reasonable, Mr. Dineen. You agree?
So so I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Walker, because this property has been subdivided, and I don't know the specifics of ownership with respect to the easement and access. So, Mr. Walker, what do you have to say about that?
Yeah, so two comments in response. So just in terms of the fence line that Irene was speaking of, we have a security fence line that runs that rings the perimeter of the high school property. I believe the property that you're talking about is the dog leg, for lack of a better term, that I'm now circling with my cursor. And I don't see any reason why we couldn't have continued conversation with the HCST about how that is used. You're correct that it will not be developed as part of the school project overall due to the easement. So I don't see any challenge there in terms of continuing the dialogue. And I would invite you to reach out. We can start to try and set that up.
Wonderful. You would be the appropriate contact for that.
You can start with me, and then I'll put you in touch with the right people at the school.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Irene. Always a pleasure. All right, if anybody else is here from the public that wants to come, please raise your hand. Once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody else from public?
Chair, seeing no more public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, public is closed.
I'm just going to share my screen really quick to go to the staff report, yep. One second here. A second, it's lagging a little bit. Okay, can you all see the staff report?
Yes.
Okay. So really quick, I just want to reinforce, I think the project is consistent with the visioning of the master plan. I've outlined in the staff report a few of the specific goals that the project reinforces and some of the kind of sub-objectives of those goals, including prioritizing reinvestment in socially vulnerable communities, increasing flexibility of programmable space and diversifying permitted uses, so the school use will be a new use for the redevelopment area in this part of the city, improving accommodating population growth and changing needs. So one of the direct recommendations of the master plan was to upgrade and improve community facilities, including parks, schools, libraries, et cetera. And then improving open space assets and access and connecting them to each other. So I think this is a really unique opportunity to have a regional school come in within such close proximity to such a large park. And there's a lot of great partnership opportunities for the future there. We've also identified some other goals within the master plan. I think the attorney, Mr. Dineen, had represented. We are asking for two conditions on the recommendation here, which would be that they just continue to work with our office regarding some finer details that'll come down the line as the design develops further. And some of the goals of the master plan that we hope to continue to work on with their team would be to mitigate impacts of climate change. So this is a flood zone area in the park, and so we do want to make sure that we're taking resiliency measures into consideration, particularly so that, you know, the school will not have operations impacted in extreme events and other sustainability goals, including, you know, municipal opportunities to lead use and capture of renewable energy and reduce carbon capture and reduce heat island effect throughout the city. So I think they did say on the record that they are pursuing lead certification, so a lot of these goals will be overlapping, and we just hope to continue to work with them as they develop design. As stated, they do have to go to the state for several rounds of approval, so we understand there may be changes to what we have seen here today. We just ask that they keep coordinating with us and keep us updated on the design as it flows and work with both ourselves and the Department of Infrastructure regarding traffic impacts and flood mitigation measures. With that, we do find that the proposal is consistent with the master plan. And any other questions from the board, I'm happy to answer.
All right, thanks, Mallory. We appreciate it. Now, I have no questions. Anybody else from the board?
No.
No.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I'll entertain a motion then.
I make a motion to accept as presented to the board here tonight and deem this project consistent with the master plan. And that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Okay, Dr. Gonzalez.
I like the project. I think this is consistent with the master plan. I think that having, like you said, a school, a regional school in close proximity to a park is going to be have a lot of really cool sort of dynamic opportunities for the future. And yeah, I just ask that the the people continue to coordinate with staff if any changes happen down the pike. So I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai? Commissioner Green?
Commissioner Green, you muted yourself there.
I'm sorry, my computer, iPad is acting out.
No worries.
Okay, I, I'm sorry.
No worries, thank you. Commissioner Gangadin?
This is a great opportunity, and it's consistent with the master plan. At the same time, it's also a great opportunity to blossom into providing choice for parents and for students at the same time. I am beyond excited and can't wait for this work to start. My big aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
I think it's a great project as an educator, and I think that Mr. Walker's exchange with Irene is optimistic. So I wholeheartedly vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
I vote aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Yeah, I agree. This definitely complies with the master plan. Advances and objectives and a great project. I'm going to vote aye.
Okay, motion carries. All in favor, conditions.
All right, thank you, everybody. Doc, can I turn this over to you again?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, members of the board. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, counsel. We appreciate it. Yeah, Doc, can you, for a couple minutes?
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, he talked me into a second supper already tonight, so.
No worries.
I'll be back.
Thank you, Chair, for the record. I'm substituting again as Chair. So acting Chair. Okay, I'll call the next case, and that's case P two-two dash one-two-two. This is number nine on your agenda. This is for review and discussion of amendments to the Journal Square twenty-sixty redevelopment plan. Changes to the plan will include the creation of a corner bonus specific to three locations within Zone Three, the commercial center. The bonus would allow for four additional floors for commercial uses only, including office, medical office, professional office, retail services, education uses, art galleries, government uses, child and adult daycare centers, theaters, hotel uses, and parking. Formal action may be taken.
Okay, promoting Anthony Vandermark and Chuck Harrington.
recorded.
Hey, Cameron, could you also promote Sam Bellamy, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Harrington, welcome.
Thank you. Good to see everyone. Well, let me start, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant for the amendment that's being proposed, amendment being presented to the board here, which is Journal Square Tower LLC. A little bit of a background. Journal Square Tower LLC is the owner and proposed developer of the Pep Boy site that this board has seen, the mixed-use building, on two occasions within the last year. That's, we believe, is, you know, a tremendous project there on the corner of Cottage Street and Kennedy Boulevard. So what we have done is we initiated this amendment that you're seeing tonight, and after initiating with planning, they put their their own, you know, comments and changes into it as an overall plan and amendment to the redevelopment plan, because they thought it made sense, not only at the location that we proposed, but also at two other locations that you'll see during our presentation. And as noted into the record, what this does is it proposes, there is, thank you, Sam, or whomever put that on, Sam. So our site is on the right-hand side, if you, of that map, on the east side of Kennedy Boulevard. And I note that all these properties are currently within Zone Three in the redevelopment plan area. Zone Three does not have any corner bonus lots. So what we are proposing tonight is to add three corner bonus property locations, and they would then permit a developer to utilize those bonuses, provided they meet the criteria within the proposed amendments. And that would allow you to do similar uses to the office space bonus, but it also permits parking. uh, to the office space bonus, but it also permits parking and it also adds a hotel use. Uh, so you, we, we think this area being so close to, to the, to the Journal Square, you know, actual Pat Station that this, uh, this is something that we want to promote. We think it's consistent with the redevelopment plan. It also, um, as my client, uh, discovered, you know, it, it, it'll promote, I, I think developers to look more into some parking here in the area because, uh, below-grade, uh, parking in this, in this area, um, is difficult. Um, so this allows developers to bring that, uh, out of the, out of the ground, um, without, you know, uh, conflicting with other possible uses that they, they would have in the area. So, um, we think it's, 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 it's a positive and it's consistent with the intent, uh, and, uh, and purpose of the redevelopment plan. And with that said, um, I'm gonna hand it over to, uh, Sam Bellamy to kind of walk you through the, the planning principles as from the applicant's perspective as to why we, we think this is, uh, consistent with the, the master plan and the redevelopment plan.
Thank you, council.
Samuel Swarian, do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure. Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y.
Thank you.
And my license is current and in good standing.
Thank you, Mr. Bellamy, for that. You're qualified.
Great. Um, so, so getting right into my presentation, as, as this redevelopment plan goes forward, um, the New Jersey local redevelopment and housing law states that all provisions for a redevelopment plan or subsequent redevelopment plan amendments shall either be substantially consistent with the municipal plan or designed to effectuate the municipal master plan. Um, so as this board is well aware, the Jersey City recently, um, came out with the new master plan in twenty-twenty-one. Um, so as my, my review with this redevelopment plan amendment, um, that master plan does identify the Journal Square area as one of the distinct corridors that serve the community. Um, distinct commercial corridors that serve, serve the community. Um, and it further identifies Journal Square as the central business district of, uh, Jersey City. And that's really historically, um, from a geo- geographical sense, Journal Square is, you know, the centered location of Jersey City. But also, um, you know, it developed around the Pat Station, um, and was really predominant commercial corridor. And, and, and historically, commercial corridor in Jersey City. Um, so looking further into the, the land of land use, um, goals and objectives of the twenty-twenty-one, uh, master plan, um, this redevelopment plan really does further, uh, several of them. Um, so as Mr. Harrington said, that the bonus is really centered around allowing for a corner lot bonus in Zone Three, um, which would permit, uh, four additional stories for, um, commercial uses, um, such as office, medical office, um, retail services, hotel uses, um, theaters and parking. Um, and really with those four additional floors, it is an incentive for developers to further, um, develop Journal Square area consistent with the redevelopment plan objectives and, and consistent with the master plan objectives of further promoting and re-establishing Journal Square as, um, you know, that central business corridor in, in Jersey City. Um, so this, this redevelopment plan amendment would promote the development of a diversified economy by again allowing for four additional floors of commercial uses within mixed-use, uh, buildings. Um, provided that the, the requirements are met, um, as, as far as lot size. Um, this, this redevelopment plan amendment would further strengthen the neighborhood-oriented commercial um, areas in, in, uh, Jersey City and Journal Square. Um, during the Journal Square area and specifically the, the Kennedy Boulevard corridor um, is identified as a commercial core, um, really stemming out from the Journal Square Pat Station um, and north and south along Kennedy Boulevard. So, um, this, this bonus, these, these three locations for the, uh, corner lot bonus are consistent with, with that land use plan and, um, and the commercial corridor areas of Jersey City. And again, I, I think providing corridor, additional bonus floors, encouraging mixed-use, mixed-use development, um, office floors, commercial floors, um, hotel uses around the Journal Square Pat Station would, um, continue to encourage transit-oriented development. Um, and, and really encourage a, a more walkable area that provides for these neighborhood services, provides for jobs, and that's all consistent with, with the master plan. So with that, I, I do find that these redevelopment plan amendments are consistent with the twenty-twenty-one master plan. Um, in the alternative, that the redevelopment plan amendments, um, can also be advanced, um, with reasons so forth, um, set forth in the redevelopment plan. So in reviewing the general goals and objectives of the Journal Square twenty-sixty redevelopment plan, um, again, it's really to re-establish the area as, um, the central business district. Um, encouraging mixed-use development centered around the Pat Station. And, and this redevelopment plan amendment allowing for those four additional bonus floors, um, really does that. Again, there's, there's several redevelopment plan objectives that would be advanced. I know this board is very familiar with the, the redevelopment plan. But I, I think this does continue to encourage mixed-use development. Development with residential office, commercial, and a building. Um, encouraging efficient use of land in, in a down, in a, you know, central business area um, and structured parking within a building to really provide for, um, for the uses that, that would be promoted with, with this redevelopment plan amendment. Um, so I, I think wrapping up, it is my opinion, this, this redevelopment plan amendment is consistent with the objectives of the redevelopment plan. Um, is also consistent with the twenty-twenty-one master plan. Um, I'd be happy to answer any, any questions the board might have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Bellamy? I don't have any.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. Yep, Mr. Harrington?
Yeah, that, that completes our, our presentation for the requested amendments.
Okay, thank you. Any questions overall? Commissioner Lipsky.
Uh, from Mr. Harrington, so the one property at the former Mineki Pep Boys, uh, is, but you're representing the owner of that?
Yes.
The other two parcels are owned by the same owner?
No, those, uh, the other properties, one is the White Castle property. Um, and, uh, the other one is Catty Corner, uh, across the street, that different owner as well. I, I don't represent them.
Okay, so, but they're aware of the, uh, ramifications of this, uh, proposal? The owners of those parcels.
I know the one across Catty Corner would be, uh, or is, uh, I don't know about White Castle.
So my question then, uh, follow-up is, given that, I mean, and, uh, I love that this, uh, speaks to the amendments we, uh, looked at or the, the, uh, that were prepared, were proposed to the redevelopment plan a few weeks back. Uh, but I guess I'm a little kind of like, uh, looking at why be my optic? It seems kind of concentrated in one section of Journal Square uh, versus other areas, uh, within the twenty-sixty redevelopment plan. I guess you have to start somewhere, but I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, is, is that I can make a, having been a former councilman in the area and still living here, there are other parcels, uh, within this redevelopment plan that could equally, uh, benefit for, from this, uh, wonderful, uh, proposal.
Hey, I, I think there, there may be, but I, I think that's something that we'd have to discuss or the planning would have to review further or, you know, um, other property owners. Cause this, this, this one specifically just speaks to the Zone Three where there are no corner bonuses, uh, presently. Um, but this option to promote, you know, it promotes additional commercial uses and, and gives the, the ability to provide that additional parking. I, I think that may be something that, you know, others may want to look at, but that's not part of this application.
Yeah, I agree that we should definitely look at it because, uh, the uses that are being proposed for the bonus speak to that fifteen minutes of being able to, uh, access certain things within, you know, making it a, a lot more convenient for walking or, you know, uh, whatever. So, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Lipsky. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. All these, uh, twenties, uh, we have this twenty-sixty for twenty-two now, the proposal. How about the parking and how much parking you are proposing?
Well, on this amendment would require that, um, if you, if you were to utilize this bonus, that you would be required to have one parking space uh, for every one thousand square feet of commercial space, uh, that, that utilized this bonus. So i- in effect, it, it tells, it tells a developer, if you want to utilize this, you are going to have to create some parking within this building.
So this is for a whole twenty-sixty area?
No, no, this is just three, three specific corner properties. Within Zone Three.
But why you only for three properties? It should be for the whole area because Journal Square, they have no parking. People are looking for parking and it should go for the whole area. Any building that will must have parking in this area.
Well, I, we're just, we're just, we initiated this for, you know, for our property and then, and then these, the additional lots were, were considered as part of an overview of the immediate area. I think again, as kind of in follow-up to Commissioner Lipsky's comments, that that may be something that, that the planning division can look at further, but it's not part of what's being presented tonight.
Council, let me just jump in and give some, some general guidance to everybody that this is specific to one of the zones within the twenty-sixty redevelopment plan. So that plan has multiple zones. This is specific, the requirements are different depending on the zone. And perhaps planning can speak to, but Mr. Harrington, if I understood your comments, while you represent one property owner and were obviously instrumental in proposing, uh, the amendments or at least discussing the amendments, planning looked at those proposals and expanded it based on, uh, their review at least of the zone in which this property is in within the plan. But perhaps the entire twenty-sixty plan, which as I understand it, planning is constantly looking at and reevaluating. And obviously various projects have been approved in the plan at various stages of construction and approval. So, uh, if that helps, I know we're talking with a lot of pronouns, the area, Journal Square, but there are a lot of layers and, and subsections within that, that plan.
And, uh, you know, there are so many buildings, all buildings which are being sold, even like Hoboken and, uh, uh, Newark Avenue, Central Avenue, those big, they are going to build those big, big fifty stories. So we have to go and ask them for, you know, whatever is allowed, like how much parking space they, they should provide, you know, it's very important for this area now.
Thank you, Dr. Desai, and thanks, thank you, Council Alampi for that, um, sort of description. Again, we're just sort of being presented just that one zone, um, and Council, um, Harrington is representing that one, uh, property owner, um, of those three lots. So, so, um, so thanks for that.
The one lot.
The one lot.
Dr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
And, and Mr. Harrington, if I understood and I understand correctly, the parking requirement with the bonus actually increases from what, what's happening currently in that Zone Three.
That's, that's correct. There's, there's actually now a parking requirement in the event you want to use this bonus. Um, uh, otherwise there's no parking requirement within the building. So this, this will create parking.
Yep, so we, we're thankful for that, actually, I am. Um, okay, good. Anyone else?
Yeah, one for every thousand square feet. So, you know, I mean, you know, so let's just say, for example, if it's a daycare or a school and somebody's dropping off, you may only need a very limited number of parking for staff. Versus if it's a, uh, a restaurant or something. So.
Okay, I mean, it's, it, for what's my client's intent is to use most of, uh, most of this, uh, these four floors, if not all of them for, for parking.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Harrington, is that your presentation?
Yes, it is.
Okay, a little bit up for the public. Is there anyone, any public here for case P two-two dash one-two-two? We should speak on this. Please raise your hand. Any public?
Here, see, there is no more public. I would like to close the public portion.
Okay, there's a hand up.
Someone just came right under the gun here. As you were speaking, uh, Acting Vice Chair. Okay, let's promote Ms. French.
Promoted.
Hi, Ms. French, you are muted. And we can't see you either. Oh, there you go. Okay.
Ms. French, I just want to swear you in before you speak, okay?
Oh, good afternoon, I should say. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. Can you hear us?
Your speakers are not working. Please check your connection.
That's it now.
Okay.
Can you hear us now?
No, it's, no, it's muted again.
Ms. French, can you hear us?
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, great. Ms. French, I just, I just want to swear you in before you speak. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
My name is Deborah French, D E B O R A H F R E N C H. I live two Skyline Drive.
Thank you.
Ms. French, you've got three minutes to, uh, give us your comments, okay?
Yes, um, I really don't have a comment. I just want to clearly understand, uh, the Zone Three. Which building or corner of Journal Square is this building in? Is it on Summit Avenue side, Sip Avenue side, Provonia Avenue side? I'm not sure exactly where in Journal Square this building is.
They're, they're all located on Kennedy Boulevard, uh, the, uh, existing Pep Boy site, that would be one of the properties. Uh, the existing White Castle site at the corner of Newark Avenue and Kennedy Boulevard. And then, uh, the, the corner that's across, Catty Corner across from, uh, the Pep Boys.
Oh, okay, I'm on the wrong side of Journal Square. Okay.
Is that a good, is that a good thing?
Uh, it's kind of crowded over there. Uh, I, I don't know where, is there gonna be a, a park, a drive-in park, like the one they have by the courthouse? That's gonna be like the ramp with floor levels?
He, yeah, you'd have to drive, drive into the building, whether it's a ramp or, or mechanical parking.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Ms. French.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Do we have anyone else from the public?
Here, seeing no more public, I, uh, close, make a motion to close the public portion.
Okay, public is now closed.
Back again, uh, Acting, uh, Chair, can I ask a, a quick question? Miss Harrington, based on Ms. French's, uh, questions and comment, uh, has this been heard or will, I, I, I imagine if it hasn't, it would go before the county planning board, right? Because it's on Kennedy Boulevard.
Oh, yeah, any, any site plan approval for any, any of these lots would require Hudson County Planning Board approval as well.
Okay, so it hasn't gone yet?
No, the, yeah, correct. These, these would just be amendments to permit that.
So, Mr. Harrington, let's be very clear. First, the matter goes to the council, the city council, to determine whether or not to actually by ordinance adopt and amend the plan.
Correct.
There, an applicant would come to this board for site plan approval and would simultaneously, uh, or after, have to go to the county for either county planning board approval or seek an exemption from the county plan.
That's correct.
Thanks again, council. All right. So, Mr. Harrington, oh, who, who has this? Wants to, is it Timothy?
It's me.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I want to expand on, uh, some of the stuff Mr. Harrington was talking about. Um, the original genesis of this has been kind of in the works for a while, uh, almost, almost before the pandemic where Tanya and I started discussing whether or not different corners could benefit from where Tanya and I started discussing whether or not different corners could benefit from a bonus to add something different than just giving height for residential, uh, you know, uses. And when the Pep Boys, uh, site became a project, um, and Mr. Harrington came to us, talking about a corner bonus possibly for that site. We had, we had kind of worked together to try to figure out what would be the best for this area going forward. Now, I know everyone's talking about parking all over this, different parts of the square. Um, originally, we had more sites on this and, uh, different members of the public were not in favor of certain sites and some were. Um, eventually we, we met with Councilman Boziano, we discussed that with him. And ultimately, the end of the day, we came up with these three sites and laid out the, uh, different parameters for adding parking as well as the, uh, commercial uses. I feel going forward, this is going to be, you know, tremendous for not just the one site Mr. Harrington has come in with, but other sites that might not necessarily be, you know, fully reaching their potential like other sections along Kennedy Boulevard. And Kennedy Boulevard can handle a little bit more traffic than a lot of these other smaller streets. So implementing parking in these areas is a lot easier to do than it would be in other areas. There are certain sections of the square where the streets are very narrow. And if we make them like vehicle generators or vehicle attractors where a lot of vehicles are going to one site, it's going to be a lot more difficult to, uh, maintain traffic patterns in those areas. So as a starting point, we felt this was a good spot to have some required parking as part of a commercial give back of sorts to kind of like, you know, because there's a lot of residents moving in the Journal Square and nobody's really prioritizing commercial space. Or, you know, different services. So I feel like this is a good to get this, uh, started. That said, I hope that the, uh, board votes favorably, uh, this amount.
Thank you, Timothy.
So are there other parts of Journal Square being looked at? I mean, Summit Avenue, Baldwin, down to Montgomery, Bergen, uh, Academy? SIP?
Yes, we could.
I think it's a brilliant idea. I mean, it, it, I'm sorry.
Tim, you're cutting out a lot, uh, at least on my end. So I couldn't hear what you, couldn't hear what you said.
Hold on, let me. Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. The Journal Square 2060 Plan does not have a minimum parking requirement. And because of that, it kind of creates a challenge where it basically is developers can put in parking when they want to. But we've almost reached a situation where it have, they have to be incentivized to add parking in certain situations. So yes, we can look at other corner bonuses and stuff, but there's a lot of corner bonuses already in the square. We chose this because zone three does not have any corner bonuses. And this section of JFK really has, besides the office space bonus, doesn't have really any other bonuses. But, you know, I think going forward, I think more, uh, more people will want to look to add bonuses in certain areas for parking purposes. We can certainly look at that.
Well, I, I, and part of the conversation, I mean, I completely understand and respect that decide. Same token, there's a number of people, and I think part of the rationale for the amendments to the redevelopment plan was to minimize the necessity for vehicles by creating these walkable communities. So one of the things that we can't get up here are, are good restaurants, good daycares, uh, stuff of that nature. So by increasing the commercial part of it, while we're building these, you know, nice towers, I think it builds a sustainability, uh, you know, a- and the mayor keeps touting and, and love it. Via, uh, city bike, path trains, jitneys. I mean, so I think you're on to something. Uh, my, my bigger thing is to say, hey, look, if it's good for the northwest section of Journal Square, heck, let's put it in some of these other places. Let's get it done.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Lipski. Anyone else?
Uh, Chair, to just continue the conversation with Commissioner Lipski. Is there, is their timeline when the planning board can actually take a look to see, um, if they can extend this to other corners as well?
I think it's already in the process. Uh, planning has been approached about other corners. Um, I believe there is a meeting between another developer and Councilman Boziano that's going to be coming up soon. So. There are others interested, uh, in corners like this.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely will be looking at it going forward.
So, Tim, one other thing is, is that are all the corners in Journal Square, they're not all zone three, right?
No, they're not. And some of, some of these corners in the future could overlap with other corner bonuses. So it's, it's a longer process to try to figure out. You don't want to give, you know, you don't, certain areas might have too many bonuses and then all of a sudden you get a super tall tower in the middle of nowhere. And that's not what we want to do either. So, um, we're trying to, you know, plan this out the best we can.
Got it.
Thank you, guys. Okay, anything else, guys?
Nothing else.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two, two dash one, two, two as presented to the board here this evening for approval.
Second it.
Acting Vice Chair, go on, get it.
These amendments are consistent with the master plan and, um, uplifting the neighborhood with the specific zoning at the same time. In addition, providing parking, which is really a necessity. Um, my vote is aye.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
I see this area, of course, I've been here for 30 years and parking is the most necessity for everybody in this area. And of course, Carrington said all these three areas. He's looking for parking and other, uh, uh, other, uh, like daycare and all those things. So it's a necessity for people. And I think that's very good and people would approve it. And of course, we have, I like it, everybody likes it and we need it. So I would say aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
I say aye for the residents in Journal Square. Now you have a place to park your car. It's a good project.
Yeah, so I don't know if the White Castle would fall under historic designation. Put a plaque up or something, uh, see about keeping it. I think, I think it's great. I think it, uh, completely complements and expands and is futuristic about to the redevelopment plan and certainly I live only a few blocks away and I look forward to some of the amenities that will be on board. So wholeheartedly, aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Acting Chair, Dr. Gonzalez. Yeah, I think the creation of this, uh, bonus, a corner bonus, uh, is a good idea. Um, and I, I think we should have area. So this is a, this is a, a good sort of win to forward to city council for formal adoption. So I vote aye. All in favor, motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, um, is this a good time to take a break, Mike?
I think so, yes.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Okay, let's take ten. It's, uh, six fifty-six. We'll be back on at, uh, seven oh six.
Hello? Yes? Oh, hi, Tom.
All right, could we come to order please again, everybody? All right, so if um. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're up to item eleven, this case P two two dash zero nine three is a preliminary and a final major site plan with C variances for one hundred summit place. Mister. I think we all spoke at the same time, but yes, we're on that case and Mister Richard Kaplan has been promoted.
Okay, Mister. Can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Okay, but it doesn't look like my video is on, can you see me?
We cannot.
Um, my audio, let's see. Start video, maybe that's what I have to do. Okay, there we go.
There you go. All right, we got you, counsel.
And I have two witnesses, I have Thomas Barrett. And I have Ja- Jasvinder or Johnny. Um, have they? Have they been promoted or have they gotten invitations to be promoted? I don't see them.
Yes, I just promoted them.
Is a Justin Han part of the team?
Uh, let's see, I know that Mister um our Johnny will have the project engineer available. Um, that's not the name I have, but he did say that someone would be standing by in case he's needed, so he could be, I don't know. That's not the name I have, uh, we could ask Mister Arjani once he's. Jazz, are you um, are you there?
Perhaps he's under that moniker. Cam, why don't we promote this Mister Han or Ms. Han and figure it out?
Okay, there's Tom Barrett, I see him, Tom, can you hear? I see him, but I don't hear him, I think he's maybe muted.
He's shaking his head, he is muted.
Yeah, I hear, I see his lips moving, but no voice, Tom, it looks like you're muted, can you turn your volume on, your microphone? Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I, it's, it's uh, it's me and the Han because my.
Can you hear it?
It's not working, so I use using his.
Is that you, Jazz?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, okay, so that's us, actually, it's Jasvinder or Johnny. And I see Tom Barrett's face and I see his lips moving, but I can't hear him and I don't know if he can hear me. It must be your microphone. Do you know how to, you, there's probably a setting where you're muted, maybe you.
Richard, I hear you.
Yep, we hear him.
Is that you, Tom?
I hear you.
Okay, good, okay, got you.
Yes.
Okay, a- and Jazz, is there anyone else from Burton Engineering or just the three of us?
I have Sean uh Van Piachen who's uh signed the drawings as engineer with me, he will be available in case there are questions. On site engineering, but it'll be me who will describe the project.
Okay, so we, so at this point, we were expecting only the two witnesses, Mister Mister Barrett will be speaking as owner's representative. And Mister Jasvinder will be the expert, um, he's the project architect.
All right, so Mister Kaplan, why don't we put your representation on the record, introduce the application, we'll get the. Notices squared away and then we'll be off and running as.
Okay, so my name is Richard Kaplan, uh, I'm the attorney for the applicant, the firm name is Ruben Kaplan Associates. The applicant is Summit Greenwich Urban Renewal comma LLC, they are the owner of this property. Um, the property is located at one hundred Summit Place. It's in the Greenville Industrial Development Plan, Modern Industrial Park District. Um, the existing facility is a warehouse distribution office facility of a hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and eighty five, two hundred and eighty five square feet plus or minus. Um, it is occupied by an affiliate of the owner Summit Import Corp. Um, and they are the sole occupant. This application is for the construction of a forty seven thousand six hundred and seventy seven square feet building addition. Adjacent to the east wall of the existing building. It's intended for the use of Summit in Port Corps, although there is a possibility that it will be occupied in the future. Uh, by a third party tenant, but there are no third parties right now intended to utilize the facility. Um. As I said, it's a site plan application where requesting uh preliminary and final approval. There are a number of bulk variances, however, the bulk variances are limited to parking in the front of the facility. Um, and um, certain aspects of the site lighting. This uh Summit Place is a very private street with. Very few neighbors, no neighbors close by. And we believe that these minor variances will be beneficial to the property. Have no adverse impact on the surrounding area and will be an overall benefit to the site, visitors to the site. Um, just to provide better access um and better accommodate uh both the employees and visitors. Um, as I said, I have two witnesses, um, one will be the owner's representative, one will be the project architect. There are a number of exhibits, um, I believe the bulk of which were included with the application. But um, there may be a few that have, that are not in the application, I don't know if you want exhibits separately marked or.
We'll do that when. Uh, the expert is testifying, I assume there'll be some screen sharing and has the exhibits come up that were not in. Where that were changed from what was submitted, we will mark them accordingly and we will follow. In sequence, so let's start with counsel, I am in receipt of your affidavit of publication proof of mail with respect to the application at one hundred summit place. This application was originally scheduled for the August twenty third meeting of this body. We carried the notice because we did not reach you at that time and advised everybody that the meeting would be held tonight, September sixth. In the same manner. I find the notice to be in order, so we're gonna mark that as a one for the rec. With that counsel, I've had the opportunity to look at the plans as has the board, it seems to me that this is a pretty straightforward. Application as to what it is, it is a warehouse, it is going to be a uh rather large warehouse, but a warehouse nonetheless. In the aforementioned location, so I think the thing that we really need to focus on, it's in the Modern Industrial Park District. I think what we need to focus on is the variances being sought. And how those variances relate specifically, and we'll talk about it only because we've. Recently had this issue in the industrial zone, uh, paying attention to the signage chairman, uh, we wanna make sure that. All the judges are happy with our discussion of signage, uh, if and when they see us, so. With that counsel, let's have Mister. Uh, I guess his name is not Mister Han, he's borrowing somebody's computer, so.
Yes.
We'll have the gentleman sworn.
His, his name is that, yes, Mister Mister Arjani, sorry, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Let's start Johnny, I swear, you know, if you can raise your right hand, do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry about this name on the screen, uh, my name is Jasvinder Arjani, J A S V as in Victor, I N D E R. Last name A R J A N I.
Thank you.
I, I'm a licensed architect in state of New Jersey and my license is current.
Okay, thank you, sir, you're qualified.
Thanks. Thank you, so Mister Arjani will be testifying as an expert and uh we can dispense with the, the, any additional qualifications, is that correct?
Yes, he is qualified as an architect tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, if I can share the screen now, I'll try and see, okay, uh. Are you able to see my screen with the plan on there?
No, we're not yet.
Right now, it's not showing.
Okay, let me. Now.
Okay, it's coming up, yes, we have.
Okay, so what, what I will start with is a site plan drawing site and preliminary building plan set that was submitted along with the application. It consists of the site set as well as the preliminary building plans, uh, that is uh submitted with the application. Besides that, there were reports on stormwater drainage and operation. And an illustrative site plan that was submitted. Along with a survey of the property that was prepared by DBK Consulting. So I will be using the site plan set and what you have in front of you is the second sheet. In the set, which is demolition and soil erosion control plan, and I'm using this to describe the existing conditions. So this, the site is um. As mentioned earlier, is hundred summit place and it is uh summit place is a private road, which is off Harbor Drive. And uh, the frontage of the property is limited to the end of the summit place, which is fifty seven foot wide and all other proper. Property surrounded by industrial or public um use, there is railroad tracks on the north. Uh, and on the south, on the left is uh highways, uh, in fact, if let me use an aerial and that would explain it better. Uh, if I may, uh, and this is not submitted, so if you want to mark this as an exhibit, we can call it. Exhibit one.
A two, sir.
A two, okay.
This purports to be an aerial of a hundred summit place from Google Maps, it's dated September fifth, twenty twenty two at three twenty seven P M, is that accurate, sir?
Yeah, it was actually printed today, so uh. I don't know if there's a date on it, but I, it was printed today, which is nine, six, twenty two, and it's from Google Maps.
And you printed this, sir, and downloaded it?
Yes, I did, myself.
A two, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Tell us what it depicts.
Sorry?
Tell us what it depicts.
Okay, yeah, this, the, the red dot shows what the location is and on the west side are the. The uh turnpike extension and Route one eighty five and all uh the east side, north and south are industrial properties. So I just wanted to quickly show the location of the uh property and the context, so now I'll go back to my um. Uh, site plans that. So the existing property is uh in lot eight and fourteen, lot eight is eight. Nine point eight acres and it comprises uh most of the uh land that is part of the application. And lot fourteen is a small little triangle at the bottom left. So lot eight is nine point eight acres and together with lot fourteen, it's ten point twelve eight, twelve point one two acres. As mentioned earlier, the frontage is just fifty seven feet and the lot dimension from. Left to right at the maximum is eight hundred and eight feet by seven hundred and eight at the, from north to south. And it is, as mentioned by you, it's in Greenville Industrial redevelopment plan, modern industrial park district. And the use uh is warehouse distribution. And in the northwest corner, there is a, there are offices. And the existing building footprint, which is this rectangle here, is uh. One hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and eighty five square feet, that includes a ten thousand two hundred and two square foot office. Uh, which is actually on two stories, so for a office area total of twenty thousand four hundred and four square feet. There are eighty three parking spaces on the north and west side of the building and there are fifteen loading bays. Uh, at this point, if uh I would like to, in the existing conditions, it does comply with all the bulk requirements of the district. But on our cover sheet, uh, we had a typographical error, which I would like to correct here, the. Front setback on the cover sheet is mentioned as hundred and six point six eight feet, which should actually be, have been sixty three point four one feet and it's still conforming. There is an existing condition of which uh Mister Kaplan referred to earlier and uh is a variance that will be continued to be requested. Is the location of the parking in the front of the building. The, as I mentioned earlier, the property is peculiar in the shape that it doesn't have much of the frontage, it's only this little portion. And and the park, the front yard setback requirement is only fifteen feet from this, so there is no parking within fifteen feet. But considering the front of the building, which actually faces the north. Or if you were to consider the west side, there are parking spaces that exist on both with north and west. And if that is considered the front of the building, that variance is an existing condition that we have called out on our. Uh, drawings. Uh, now it is proposed to add a similar use to the east side. And for that, I'll use the illustrative site plan that is, that was previously submitted with the set, I don't know if you have it in front of you or not, it's called I A S P dash one. And uh. To the east side, which is the right of the existing building, is proposed a one story forty seven thousand six hundred and seventy seven square foot addition. Which is one story and uh currently it is overgrown grass and vegetation, but um. It's, it's not paved. The approach and access to the addition will be on the south side, as we are proposing, the existing approach is most uh mainly to the north and the west. This way, the um access would be separated from the existing building. And the proposed parking uh on the south side is a few spaces for trucks that are loading based to, on the south side of the building. And there are uh car parking spaces uh on this. Again, the south and on the east side, some parallel spaces, so with this proposal, the parking lot uh will connect and uh. A traffic can move all around the building and that also benefits in terms of a fire truck that can get around the building. Uh, as mentioned earlier, the footprint of this proposed addition is forty seven thousand six hundred and seventy seven square feet, that brings the building coverage. Up to thirty six point one percent of the property, the existing is twenty five and the permitted is seventy five, so we are well under the permitted. Uh, allowed building coverage. Does the, the, there is a second floor office proposed and I'll describe it more when I go to the building class, but it's on the south side, it's eight thousand uh and fifty square feet. It's uh within the building envelope and the overall height of the building that we are proposing is uh seventy feet, which is permitted in the zone. It is a one story building and the height of the building is proposed as seventy from, for a rack storage, uh, that is our intent in there. Yeah, with this uh addition of the new building and the office, the overall. Square footage of the building increases to one hundred and seventy seven thousand two hundred and fourteen square feet, which brings the F A R uh, that's the floor area ratio up to zero point four two. And the permitted F A R is one, so we are less than half of what is permitted in the zone. Or in the district. Uh, in terms of setbacks, this addition will affect only the uh east side setback, which was uh previously uh one hundred and seventy nine point seven feet. And it will reduce to forty point seven feet, where minimum required is twenty feet. The uh parking numbers that we are adding is thirty two car parking spaces. And five truck car parking spaces, there are eight loading dogs and one drive-in door proposed on the south side. And with the addition, the impervious coverage will um increase to seventy one point two percent from fifty seven point two, that adds about. Uh, one point four acres of uh impervious. And uh, the maximum allowed is ninety percent, so it's still on uh. Well, under ninety, it's seventy one point two percent is what we are proposing. The open space uh will reduce from twenty eight, uh, yeah, sorry, from forty two point eight percent to twenty eight point eight. And fifteen percent is required, so we, we have more than what is required. Uh, the, the parking numbers with the addition altogether with the office and the two uses, and I can describe the breakup if you're interested, but. The total requirement is hundred and one parking spaces and the application is proposing one hundred and eleven, which is ten more than required. It will meet all the E V charging station requirements that are mandatory by the state and it already is equipped with three parking spaces. What is required is four, so uh we will be exceeding the requirement of the E V charging stations. They are not uh depicted on the site plan at this time, but we'll be adding that uh on the plans. Uh, there are uh, again, loading space requirements for this square footage is. Uh there are uh again, loading space requirements for this square footage is only two. And uh considering the use of the building, we have twenty one, so we exceed the required. Uh the. Earlier, I mentioned about the parking uh location that had requested, that was previously uh. That it requires a variance to be located in front of the building and with the proposed uh. Improvements, the parking will be on all four sides of the building and the condition will remain. So we, we are continuing to uh ask for a variance to locate the parking in the front yard. And as mentioned earlier, that the, the property surrounded by industrial or, or by railroad. So the, it's not visi- the parking is not visible from any uh uh roadways or public uh uses. And the residential properties are across the turnpike extension, which is uh over thousand feet away. So the park uh it, I don't think it'll have any, in my opinion, will have any detrimental effect or visual uh. Visually, it will be obstrusive uh to the neighbors, the location of the parking spaces. Uh the lighting uh for the existing, again, I'll go back to our, uh it's in the set. Uh we, I don't know if I, I will just show it to you. Uh if you want more details, I can provide. The, the existing uh lot is lit and we have not analyzed the existing part of the site. The proposed improvements are limited to the south and the east side. And what we are proposing is uh nine pole lights and fourteen wall lights on the building. And the average lighting intensity is zero point one four foot candles and a maximum of seven point three eight. So uh which is very low um in my opinion for a use like this. In terms of landscaping, there is uh not a lot of land uh left for landscaping, so there is lawn. And, and shrubs proposed, there are sixty five deciduous shrubs that are being proposed and in the, in the island area, there are, there is ornamental grass. And ground cover. Uh of course, for the addition uh. As Mister Kaplan mentioned, it will be used by the current owner with an option to lease. Uh so the utilities that are being proposed are independent, uh they will uh be new laterals from the existing mains. On the north side and um which is on, on the drawing, utility drawing here indicated. And there is a transformer on the north side as well, from where the electric connection will be obtained for the new addition. Uh I will now quickly uh describe the building uh which is again in the set. Uh this is drawing C four point one of the set, which shows the overall floor plan. At the bottom, in this case, the north is the, the left side. And uh the existing warehouse is at the bottom of the sheet. And the proposed addition is on, on top and the shaded portion is where the second floor office is being proposed. And that's eight thousand and fifty. Uh thanks, and at the bottom left, that is the northwest corner, is the off, existing office, which is two stories as well. The next sheet, C four point two uh is illustrating the internal layout, which is an approximation. We'll have a final rack uh layout later, but this is what is, the intent is. The rows of um lines here shows how the racks will be laid out. And on the right side are the, the loading base and the clean portion on the right side under the office will be used for. Uh four clips or any movement for loading and unloading from the trucks. The, they will be uh connections made as required if, if the current uh user is uh using the space on top. But it'll still function as a separate space. If with this proposal, uh the existing condition, there are two loading uh doors on the. On, on the east side that where the addition is being proposed, so that will be blocked. This proposal is adding two overhead doors for a drive in for any uh maintenance or any, any use. That the owner may want for the existing building. Uh that is the only change to the existing building, otherwise the existing building is staying as it's. The, this uh plan is a floor plan for the second story and it shows uh offices in open space. We have not laid out the internal partitions yet, but this office will be built as required. And um it'll have access with the elevator and two stairs. Uh the building elevations, I have a colored one which I can refer to, but I'll quickly show the signage here. The, the west elevation faces the turnpike extension and at the bottom is the existing uh portion of the building. Which is forty three feet tall and then the behind that is a proposed addition, which is seventy feet tall. Now, the signage uh, there is an existing sign on the. West face, which is about eight hundred square feet. And, and we are proposing a, a sign on the addition which uh is. Uh seven hundred and fifty square feet. Now, the, the signage is something that uh Mister Lampy referred to earlier. And, and before I describe the details here, we are proposing larger signs. As I mentioned earlier, this property is uh not on a public street. It's, it's uh off a private road summit of Harbor Drive and there are highways on the west side. And the clients, the applicant's intent is that these signs be visible from the highway. And uh that is why these signs are being proposed and the, the north. The uh south and the west face are visible from the highways where the signs are being proposed and on the east face, there are none. Uh what, so at the bottom is the north face uh which the, with the, on the left is the proposed. Uh building with the sign, uh the north and south uh signs are slightly smaller. It's one hundred and ninety seven square feet. And they, there is an existing sign on the building which is approximately. This is uh. Two hundred and eighty square feet. And the next sheet is uh, this is the east elevation which faces the adjacent property. Uh and there is no sign proposed on this space and at the bottom is the south. Uh elevation which faces Harvard Drive and uh one hundred and ninety seven square foot sign is being proposed here. Now, the uh district uh or the sign uh allows about five percent of the first floor. Wall area to be uh sign area. Now, these, these are uh. Uh tall walls and five percent adds up to a lot and um. But still, uh on the west face, uh the sign is uh uh larger than what the existing faces. Because the frontage is less of the proposed addition. These signs will be internally eliminated, so they are visible from the highways, so the neat kind of variances they'll need is internal elimination. And the permitted number of signs is one per use per frontage. And again, the frontage in this case uh. If summit is, it'll be one frontage, so two are permitted while we are providing five. And uh the permitted areas, as I mentioned earlier, would be west side, so the building um signs need three variances. And in terms of freestanding sign, there is a sign at the entrance gate right now, which is thirty square feet. And um permitted is twenty square feet, the uh uh. I think the location of the sign, I can go back quickly to the colored and show you. We are proposing to add a second sign here as you enter the property to direct the traffic towards the addition. So the, there will be two uh signs for the size of the property, thirty square feet. We feel is not a very large sign and um. And it said, it meets the setback requirements of fifteen feet. Again, for the freestanding sign, besides the number, internal elimination would be a variance that we would be requesting. Uh so for this application um. There are mainly two variances. One is the location of the parking in the front of the building. And secondly is the set of signs that I described and as I mentioned earlier, that this property is uh surrounded by. Other industrial properties, it doesn't have a frontage on a public street other than the highways from you, you can see them. And the highways are uh at a higher elevation and uh we feel that these signs are uh. Are justified from, to be seen from the highway. And if uh uh the residential property, as I mentioned, was about over thousand feet away. So I don't think these signs will be visible from the residential property. And uh I don't think they will have any uh negative impact on the neighborhood. So with that, uh if there are any uh questions, uh I can answer. Uh if you want more details, we can provide uh on this. Uh wait, wait, sorry, I just want to show the colored elevations of the building, which I was uh, yeah. So uh the, the finishes of the building, uh the west wall is close to the property line, which is forty feet. And this, this building was designed as a unlimited area building, so that wall has to be fire rated. So we are proposing this, the, the bottom shows the west wall to be built out of precast. Uh concrete or masonry, which will have a fire rating. And the uh, the north and the south walls will be insulated metal panels. This shows, on the right shows the existing uh metal panel building, so it will match that. Uh the west face will be a light gray color, which will match the existing metal panels. And the north and south walls, which are against the uh. Existing building will uh, it'll still be gray but a darker shade, so it can separate the addition from the existing. Uh the, all the metal um canopies, the coping, uh the doors. Will be dark like, dark gray color if um that, that is what is being proposed. Uh.
Sir, do we have a color rendering or is this the colored render?
This is the colored rendering of the elevations.
Black and white are color, Santo.
Why I was asking?
It's a gray color, so we don't have, we are not using, if, if you see the existing has a, a beige and a green canopy. But what, what we are proposing is a light, uh light gray and gray colors.
So Mister Kaplan, I think we need to do a better job of the breakdown of the signage. So let me just give you some of my thoughts to help direct some of the testimony. I understand there's a variance being sought for parking in the front yard. I understand that the property fronts on summit, but it is a very limited amount of frontage. And essentially, you drive into an existing surface parking lot. And if I understood the testimony, you need a variance to have the parking there. However, that parking is not being altered in any way by this application. And any change to that parking area is a improvement slash beautification of an existing. Surface parking lot. Is that a fair statement, Mister Kaplan? You're muted, Mister Kaplan.
Mister Kaplan, you're muted. You're muted, Mister Kaplan.
Okay, am I okay now?
We got you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, um Mister Jasvinder actually prepared a description of the variances dated July twenty one. That was submitted um as a supplement to the application. It might be helpful if he goes through the detail that's in that um, that letter that he did of July twenty one. Um and you're absolutely correct on the parking. But he does go into greater detail on the various um aspects of the sign and the variances. Would that be helpful?
Um Mister Kaplan, is, we've qualified Mister Jasvinder as an architect tonight. Is, is there a planner?
Uh no, there is, there, there is not a planner. Uh we believe that uh Mister Jasvinder could describe the variances adequately. Since he's the project architect and we believe that the variances were relatively minor. Um and easy enough to describe. Um so we're offering Mister Jasvinder. Uh to describe the variances and describe the benefits to the site and the surrounding community. At this time, we are not offering a professional planner, of course. If the board deemed that that would be appropriate or necessary, um we could certainly do that. But in that case, we, we would have to adjourn the application.
So Mister Kaplan, let's, let's handle this in this manner because I just want to. Get some things crystal clear on the record. So first, let's start with the parking variance sought with respect to parking in the front. Lot.
Okay.
That's an existing condition.
That's absolutely correct and Mister Jasvinder has described it. There is no change whatsoever to that uh parking lot that's facing the front of the property.
Okay, so the question is whether or not that is a front yard parking lot and therefore a variance by its nature and existence. There are parking and loading design guidelines that are being. That are not being complied with. Is that a fair statement?
Um yes, I, I, I believe that is a fair statement as to the front parking lot, yes.
And not as to the proposed loading. Those twenty one loading spots and the addition portion of the building?
That's correct. There are, there are no variances um based on Mister Jasvinder's review. Relating to that new loading driveway um entrance area to the addition.
So I just may have missed the parking loading design guideline issue. Outside of the fact that you've got a parking lot in front of a building which isn't permitted. So if there's additional deficiencies, I think we need to clarify that. I know I missed it, so we'll get there in one second.
Okay.
With respect to signage. I'm understanding that there are multiple variances in connection with the signage. I believe we're gonna need additional testimony as to number of signs, square footage. What those deficiencies are X, Y, Z, so we're gonna have to get that testimony. And then to the chair's point, whether or not the factual testimony provided by the. Witness as an architect will get you to where you need to be. As far as justifying the variance from a planning perspective, so. Chairman, is that clear on your end?
That is clear on my end. Um I, I want further testimony on the illuminated signs. Um I don't know if a fact witness is enough to. Get the applicant over the hump here tonight. Uh that's up to the board. Um the, the. Mister, Mister Jasvinder also talked about the lighting, that it's deficient. Okay, why aren't we correcting that tonight?
Um it, it's my understanding, uh Mister Jasvinder, please speak up. That there are no deficiencies on the site lining. The only variance on lighting relates to the illumination of the sign. Is that correct, Mister Jasvinder?
Yeah, when I mentioned the lighting intensities, I just mentioned that they are not very bright, so I didn't say they were deficient uh in lighting.
That's sight lighting.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, correct.
And sign lighting, yes, is uh illumination is a variance, correct.
But with respect to sight lighting, it's not that it's deficient, but it's your opinion that the illumination of the sight lighting. Is not very bright, not too sure what the relevancy of that is or isn't. It's either deficient under the lighting requirement for sight lighting or it's not.
Uh no, it is adequate. I, I mentioned that only because uh often when we present applications, uh. Uh the lighting intensi- intensities are in the range of thirty foot candles and they are too bright for the location. So I just wanted to mention that, that in this location, we have not, it's not illumination, eliminate, like it's, it's adequately lit. But we have not overlighted the space. We have not, it's not illumination, like it's it's adequately lit, but we have not overlighted the space. That in that context, I mentioned.
Okay, I misunderstood your testimony. I I thought that it was deficient.
Um, yeah, I believe the deficient, the 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 besides the existing. Front yard parking lot, we believe the variances are limited to the signs. And certainly, Mr. Jasvinder, who did write a a a a letter. Report on that could describe in greater detail. The signs and the variances. If, as I said, if the board believes that. In addition, we need a planner, we are, we will. Um, we will proceed accordingly, but certainly, Mr. Jasvinder can give. More detailed testimony on each of these. Sign variances. They are, they are listed in in his letter report of July twenty one. That was submitted as a supplement to the application.
So, Mr. Kaplan. I don't know that I have seen that.
I have not seen that. I'm looking for that right now on the.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it on the portal.
It was sent to Mr. Crayhow in response to the deficiency notice. Um, is he, is he, is he present? Yeah, I I saw.
Yeah, I'm here. Um. I'm looking back at my emails and I don't believe. Said July twenty first?
It it's dated July twenty first, let me see. Um, there's an email from Jasvinder, July twenty second, two forty one P M. Hello, Tim, attached are revised documents, the submission proceeds following, and one of those. Revised plans, traffic plan, statement of variances. It's called Statement of Variances, and it's a letter dated July twenty one.
So, Mr. Kaplan, let's do this. Let's have. The witness share his screen with that document. Let's mark it as a three. And let's see if the document helps clarify, because I did not see sign details. On the drawings.
Okay, uh, if if I may, I go back to the drawings first. If you want to see the details of the sign and I'll describe the, I'm not certainly not a planner, so I'm not going to. Us, uh, play that role, but I can describe the signs better. And and clarify what they are proposed as, if that helps.
Well, that absolutely is gonna help. We have to do it, so let's see the sign detail.
Okay, let me share the screen again.
Do you, Mr. Uh, to, Mr. Jasvinder, do you have, is, do you have that letter too that could?
Yeah, I I'll show that letter as well. Yeah, but let me first go through the signs, so.
So, Mr. Jasvinder, here's how we're gonna do it. We're gonna go elevation by elevation.
Yes.
And let's start with. Number of signs permitted. Per elevation, so I am looking at the west elevation. That's the top of the screen.
The, uh, yeah, as I see in the requ- require regulations, there's one sign permitted per use per frontage. So in this case, the frontage would be Summit Place side, let's say, uh, and I. And that would be the frontage or Hubbard Hubbard Drive, so that would be the south side. So all other sites are would be a variance. Other than the west side, and that's how my my opinion is, and if if you. Uh, agree or feel otherwise.
Well, this is my problem tonight. I I don't think it's. I I don't know that the board should be. Making the decision on whether this is a variance or not. This is a planner's job. This is a planner's responsibility. Uh.
I agree, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Tim, I don't know if you wanna chime in and have you discussed any of this with the applicant?
Chair, I agree as well with your statement just now.
What would would the board prefer, would the board prefer? That we adjourn the meeting?
I would love to adjourn the meeting.
Well, I'm I'm just, a- a- and and engage professional planner. To provide a supplemental report between now and. Uh, uh, an adjourn date with the, I mean, that's what we certainly can do.
I I mean, counsel. You know, I. If a planner isn't gonna describe the proofs to me for the variances, we can't even get to the point where we know what the variances are tonight.
Okay.
So. I think that might be the.
Yeah, I think you've answered the question, which is that we will bring in a planner. To provide a supplemental report and have him come back with Mr. Jasvinder for the next meeting.
Okay, and I'd like the variances spelled out for us. That that's all, that's all.
And counsel, as you see them, obviously, if there's a disagreement between our opinion and your opinion, that's understood, but. Uh. I think that we need to see that scope and detail presented to us. By the planner of your choosing, so.
Okay, so so w- we, based on that, we'll request to adjourn the meeting. To give us time to engage a planner, uh, write a report and appear with Mr. Jasvinder at the adjourned meeting.
Now, Chairman, let's all be honest with one another. Our next meeting is September twentieth. That's in two weeks. I do not believe that this gets accomplished in that time period. So. Why don't we pick a date so that we can preserve notice and carry to a date certain? But let's give Mr. Kaplan enough time so that. He can get. What he needs to get and get it to us. We'll get it up on the portal. And we can, we can move in a. Intelligent manner.
Um, let me ask, Mr. Jasvinder, do you have a good sense as to? Um, time? How much time to engage a planner? Have the person familiar with the application, provide a report? Sufficient for the board and the professionals to review it?
Yeah, it's it's hard for me to say that, but we can, I guess, reach out and. At least a week, ten days for someone to review and prepare a report.
Right, but that's, I mean, today's the sixth. I I think the twentieth is pushing it, and we don't want anyone to feel under pressure either to complete it. Or for the board and its professionals to review it before the next meeting. Um, I tend to agree, September twentieth might might be too soon, that's basically fourteen days, fifteen days.
Well, Mr. Kaplan, this is what I'm gonna suggest to the chairman. Chairman, I suggest that we carry it to the October twenty fifth meeting. Which is the second meeting in October. And I believe that should give Mr. Kaplan sufficient time as well as give. Uh, this body time to to get it on another agenda, since obviously. We have a lot of matters on the next couple of agendas already scheduled.
Okay. Hi. Mr. Jasvinder, any conflicts for you?
Um, that's the twenty.
Twenty fifth of October.
Just. I I think it should be okay.
Um, on that basis, we will request the adjournment till the twenty fifth. Um, and to preserve the notices to give us sufficient time to engage a planner. Have a report provided and appear with that planner at the next meeting on the twenty fifth.
So, Mr. Kaplan, the only other thing that I would say to you as a courtesy is, if you look at the agenda. And you go through some of the other applications, if you happen to see names of planners. More than once on the agenda, chances are those planners appear regularly before this body. And maybe one of the planners that you want to consider reaching out to. Uh, they're familiar with our various zones and ordinances, and they may be able to provide you the assistance. Uh, that you're looking for.
Thank you. We will discuss it right after this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. Chairman, we can announce that the matter will be carried to the October twenty fifth.
Okay, so this time, let's carry case P two two dash zero nine three preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for one hundred summit place. Uh, we're carrying with reservation of notice to a date certain, October twenty fifth. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel. All right, so let's move on to. Item twelve is case P two two dash one zero five is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for fourteen to eighteen Van Ripen Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, or Chairman, Charles Harrington of Calafoli on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I don't know if Anthony Vandermark is promoted yet and Carolyn Wurstel, those would be.
Promoted.
Okay, thank you. Um. So this is a, is a notice case, so that that was carried from prior meetings, so I'd ask that they be reviewed and marked in devils.
Thank you, counsel, that is correct. This is a notice case, and it was carried. This matter was originally scheduled. Uh. I have it as having been scheduled. For the July meeting. July twenty six, twenty twenty two.
Yeah, I believe it was carried.
Preservation of notice to tonight. Is that correct, counsel?
That is correct.
Okay. And I've had the opportunity to review that notice, the affidavit of service, affidavit of publication. All does appear to be in order. We can mark that as a one for the record.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, the project before you tonight is, um, is proposed seven story building with thirty five residential units. And eleven parking spaces. Um, I just note for the record that, uh, since, um. The last meeting, we reviewed the project a little bit closer with the planning department. And we've eliminated a couple of variances, uh. Specifically with regard to the floor to ceiling heights, um, because of some tweaks to the to the project. In in consultation with them, um, but there is a a drive aisle with, um. Uh, variance that that is required in addition to the number of stories and the height. We're asking for sixty nine feet eight inches versus the permitted sixty four. Feet and an additional story. Um, so that, um, being said, I have two witnesses tonight. Anthony Vandermark will walk you through the project. Uh, and then Caroline Wurstel, uh, can, um, address the variances. I do. I believe our our engineer is here in case you have any engineering questions, but I'll defer to the board on that. So with that, I'll pass it on to Mr. Vandermark.
And you're, uh, do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state in spite of your name, please?
Sure, that is Anthony C. Vandermark Jr. Vandermark, B is in Victor, A N D E R M A R K. Principal of MBMK Architecture.
Thank you.
Mr. Vandermark, good evening. Um, I was away from the desk before I heard your name on the way out the door. Um, but were you qualified previously or no?
Uh, not this evening, but previously in front of this board.
Okay, so your license is current tonight?
My license is current tonight.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Fantastic, thank you. If I could share my screen with the board. Uh, can everyone see the proposed aerial, uh, which is located on your sheet, uh, Z sixteen? Uh, on the screen?
Yes, we can.
Um, subject site, uh, is a seventy five feet wide, uh, by a hundred feet deep on Van Ripen. Uh, it's highlighted here in yellow, and it is approximately a hundred and twenty five linear feet. Uh, from the intersection of Summit Avenue, which runs, uh, north, south. Um, you have before you, uh, Van Ripen, again, uh, traveling from west to east is a one-way vehicular traffic. A brief overview, as Mr. Harrington had previously stated, uh, we are proposing a thirty five unit. Seven story, uh, building at sixty nine feet eight inches. Um, the proposed project sits in the zone four neighborhood mixed juice of the twenty sixty Journal Square redevelopment plan. Uh, as part of the thirty five units, the overall program breakdown is four studios, twenty five one bedrooms, six two bedrooms. As part of this application, as previously stated, providing eleven parking spaces. With nineteen bicycle parking spaces, we are proposing. One thousand one hundred and sixty three square feet of rooftop amenity. And two thousand five hundred and twenty two square feet of rooftop amenity deck. Um. As part of this application, we are providing, uh, stormwater detention below the cellar. Um, that will meet the latest requirements by the N G A D E P. Um, as previously stated, uh, we have two variance requests, uh, one for overall height and number of stories from six to seven. And from sixty four feet, which is permitted to sixty nine feet eight inches, which is less than ten percent. We have one choke point in the proposed cellar garage, uh, where twenty two feet is the, uh, drive out requirement, and we're proposing twenty one feet. Nine inches. Uh, the subject site, uh, is three, um. Wood frame, uh, residential kind of row houses with a hundred percent impervious. Lock coverage, as you can see, it's all concrete other than building. Um, as part of this proposal. Uh. We are eliminating two with three, uh, existing curb cuts. We will be adding. Uh, three parking spaces back onto the street. And we are utilizing, uh, one of the proposed curb cuts, which is all the way to the eastern portion of the property. Proposed site impact, uh, plan on sheet Z three, I work my way inward. Uh, we are proposing two new street trees, the four bicycle parking spaces. Uh, all new curbing and sidewalks as part of this project. Uh, we are proposing a twelve foot wide curb cut to the eastern portion of the property as approximately three foot seven off of the property line. Uh, we are proposing a ten foot, uh, front yard setback off of Van Ripen. And we're proposing a seven story building which is centrally located. We are proposing a ten foot rear yard setback at the first floor with an additional twenty feet, uh, at floors two through seven. Given the upper portion of the building, a thirty foot rear yard step back, uh, principal building at the upper floors is sixty feet. And the first floor proposed lock coverage has an eighty foot depth. Um, we are proposing a one foot setback to the eastern portion of the property to give the proper fire separation. With the adjacent three story building, and proposing a zero foot setback to the west, which already has a, uh, three foot setback. Um, just compliant with the, uh, current fire code. As part of the seven stories, again, we have a rooftop amenity, as you can see to the rear at the first floor, providing. Uh, private terraces and cantilever balconies at the upper left edge. We're proposing as part of this, uh, proposal. Uh, a stamped concrete at the driveway apron with pedestrian warning devices, L E D, uh, at the. Uh, at the foot, at the base of the garage, and also a warning indicator light with audible device, uh, on the building mounted face. So pedestrians have two forms of safety as part of this application. At the proposed first floor, as previously stated, uh, first floor footprint is five thousand nine hundred and ten square feet. Which is the equivalent of seventy nine, uh, percent of building coverage. Uh, as previously stated, we have a, uh, a twenty six foot front yard setback from the curb line all the way to the building face. Um, as part of this presentation, I want to put on the record is that we are going to add additional landscaping within our front yard setback, so that ten feet. Uh, between the western portion and the portion, uh, just to the east of the lobby, we provide additional landscaping. Between our front property line and the building face. Uh, this is something that brings this building more in conformance with the overall general land disordnance. Um, as part of the first floor, we have essentially located lobby. We are proposing a single car elevator system. Uh, accessed through garage door, again, the, uh, twelve foot wide curb cut. To the rear of the building, we are proposing four studios ranging from four hundred and four to five nineteen to six hundred and sixty one square feet. And a one one bedroom unit here to the, uh, southwestern corner of the building at eight hundred and forty three square feet. Uh, centrally located singer elevator with fifteen bicycle parking spaces and a trash room, uh, with trash chute. Just stepping down to the cellar, uh, again, at ninety percent building coverage at six thousand seven hundred and. Just stepping down to the cellar, uh, again, at ninety percent building coverage, six thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine square feet, we're proposing. Uh, eleven parking spaces. As you can see, we have a twenty-one foot nine uh inch uh drive out width. Uh, that uh actual deviation occurs only at the elevator. Um, this is to the striping uh that stripes. Adjacent to the compact car, but if that dimension moves down, we request that variance for that kind of choking point in the garage. Um, additional services will be gas feeder, electric heater, sprinkler pump, and some utility space uh as part of the proposed cellar. Um, and again, we are proposing a sidewalk transformer vault. Uh, that will be mostly uh on our property boundary, uh maybe some additional spillover into the sidewalk, but this will be below grade. Taking you above the first floor to the second floor, so the uh twenty feet of roof area. Uh, from the first floor to the second floor will be used to private terrace. This proposed floor plan has uh five residential units, four of them which will be one bedrooms, they range from. Six hundred and twenty-four square feet to seven hundred and thirty-four square feet. We have one two-bedroom on each floor at seven hundred and forty-six square feet. So five units per floor, uh, we have side yard setbacks of three foot one to both the east and the west. Uh, this is to accommodate. Uh, minimal uh lot line facing windows. And the overall building width is sixty-eight feet nine inches. Again, the two uh rear yard private terraces will have. Privacy landscaping in between uh and also privacy screens separating uh from one unit to the next. As part of the typical floor plan, again, five minutes per floor, similar to the second floor, however. As part of this uh proposal, we are proposing an eight-foot uh cantilevered uh balcony uh extension off of the rear two units. Um, this still provides a twenty-two-foot rear yard setback from the face of the cantilevered balcony. Um, as part of this proposal uh. And testimony, we will provide a less than fifty percent uh cantilevered balcony section uh which is compliance with the ordinance. On the roof plan above the seventh floor, we are proposing a one thousand uh one hundred and sixty-three square foot. Uh, slightly less than twenty percent uh rooftop amenity with a two thousand five hundred and twenty-two square foot roof deck. We have privacy uh landscaping uh to the west, uh, so no one looks down on the adjacent structure. Three-dimensional rendering, as you can see, uh, seven-story building, centrally located lobby with a stamped concrete curb cut. Here to the east. Uh, we're proposing a charcoal gray aluminum clad window system. The vertical piers uh in the facade are a uh off-white cast stone color with a charcoal color and cast stone base. Uh, the upper two floors will be in a uh charcoal ACM color to match the window color. And the strong horizontal uh kind of terracotta red color uh will be a profiled ACM or aluminum composite material. Um, as you can see here in the foreground, we're proposing two new street trees. And we will expand the landscaping at the base of the building. Uh, one apology to the board, if anyone has noticed, is that the car in the rendering uh in the next rendering is pointing in the wrong direction. So just take that to note. Again, as part of the overall height, we are seven stories, sixty-nine feet eight inches. The first floor will be at ten feet to the second floor, floor to floor. The second floor is slightly condensed at nine foot eight, and then the typical floors, three, four, five, six, and seven. Right, ten feet floor to floor. The overall bulkhead uh and rooftop amenity uh will be at nine feet. And the uh elevator bulkhead overrun should be approximately an additional four feet. So the overall building height again is at sixty-nine feet eight inches and seven stories. Perspective rendering here again generated by my office uh in the foreground, the sidewalk is the stamped concrete. Uh, colored uh curb cut, two two street trees. And again, uh, with ACM and cast stone elements at the front facade. Side facade has uh two-colored uh cement board siding and then also to the rear. I'll take you to that elevation. Again, as stated, we have cantilevered balconies on the rear facade, which is the top graphic north page. We have the two-side elevations at uh uh cement board panels uh in two-tone uh and in checkerboard pattern. Include my presentation, we have uh a slight rear yard access from the first floor studios, as you can see in the foreground. We are privacy planners uh at the two uh uh private. Rooftop terraces for our back units, the second floor and then floors again, three through seven, we have cantilevered balconies with rooftop amenity above. This concludes my presentation uh for this proposal.
Two, two things, Anthony, before we uh go. If we could mark your slide deck as A two, because I don't think your renderings were included in the submission to uh. To planning.
That is correct, Mr. Harrington, and I will provide uh the slide presentation um. In the event uh we do receive an approval tonight, subject to approval.
And and secondly, just with regard to our bicycle spaces, we you you said we have fifteen. Um, we can provide eighteen, correct, to uh meet our five requirement?
Yes, we we have fifteen internally and we have four externally, totally nineteen. Um, if the board sees fit that they do want the eighteen uh full-in board. Uh, of the residential building, we can certainly provide space for the additional three bicycle parking spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
You know I'm gonna ask for it since you said it. I I'm obviously a big proponent of uh bicycle parking and uh, yeah, I I would appreciate it if we can make that happen. Um. I have no questions for Mr. Vandermark. Anybody else?
Other than the car in the wrong direction? It's okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna jump right into uh Ms. Wurstel to um give testimony with regard to the requested variances.
Hello.
Hello, I swear in. You swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Carolyn Wurstel, W O R S T E L L.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wurstel, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
It is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified again.
Thank you very much. So we're here tonight uh for several uh some bulk deviations. Um, as mentioned, we have a uh max. Deviation for the maximum height and feet and stories as well as the deviation for that drive aisle um in the basement. Um. With regard to the building height. Um, we are proposing a height of uh sixty-nine feet eight inches and seven stories where uh. Six stories and sixty-four feet is what is permitted. Um, overall, this building height is consistent with the character of new development that's um, you know, being considered in this area. Um, just to the west of the site, um, is the uh Homestead Place Extension where you can have buildings that are up to twenty-five stories. And two hundred and sixty-five feet. Um, so that's significantly taller um than what is being proposed here. As well as at the corner with Summit Avenue, you could have a building of uh twelve stories and a hundred and twenty feet with a corner bonus. So overall, the the height proposed here is really in scale uh with the land use plan for the surrounding area. Um, and is with well within the context of what is going to be happening um just either to the north or I'm sorry, just to the east or west of this site. In addition, that additional five feet in height uh will not offend the intent of requirement with regard to lay in air. Um, the project is provide uh providing compliant uh yard setbacks and step backs as well as building coverage, so. Um, we are providing all of the appropriate uh setbacks from the front and the rear. Um, and so that. Those requirements are being met. Um, additionally, deviations need for that drive aisle, as mentioned, where twenty-two feet is what is required. And we're providing twenty-one feet nine inches at the choke point with the um elevator. Um, and overall, this will provide a sufficient uh space for maneuvering in the proposed parking garage, so. Um, it it's really just a a very minor deviation. Um, overall, the benefits of this project, the vast outweighed the detriments here. Um, really, it's providing the benefit of developing of a multifamily residential uh use, which is consistent. Uh, with the uh intent of the redevelopment plan. Uh, with convenient access to the past station via the new Homestead Place Extension, uh which is just to the west of the site. Um, in addition, we're eliminating two curb cuts on the uh the street. Um, and replacing them with new sidewalks and new street trees, so we're really improving the character of the street and improving pedestrian safety. Um, on this, what is a very narrow street, um, in very close proximity to the the past station. Um, overall, the the project is advances the purpose of municipal land use law. Um, consistent with purpose A, uh, we're vitalize a property uh with an appropriate use and development. Um, consistent with purpose B, it enhances stormwater management and green infrastructure on the site. Um, to help uh for secure the neighborhood from flood. Uh, flood impacts. Uh, it provides um adequate light and air and open space consistent with purpose C. Uh, it will promote the establishment of appropriate population density consistent with purpose E. And will also promote a desirable visual environment. Um, through development of a new building consistent with purpose I, as well as the new street uh new sidewalk, street trees and elimination of the curb cuts. Um, this project will not result in a substantial detriment to the general welfare. Um, as mentioned, the building is consistent with the character of new development that's envisioned in the land use plan as part of the Journal Square. Uh redevelopment plan. Um, and. Really, it's it's a provides a building that is going to be meet all current building codes. Um, and the additional five feet in height really will not result in substantial uh lay-in air impacts. Um. The uh variances like those will not result in a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone planner zoning ordinance. Um, there's it meets several redevelopment plan goals and objectives. Um, including uh objective one, promote a pattern of mixed and multiple use development. Um. To reduce automobile dependency, to encourage high density and development in close proximity to mass transit with low automobile. Automobile parking ratios and with bicycle parking requirements. Uh, with number twenty-one to promote the principles of smart growth and transit development, including variety of housing choices. Providing wider site sidewalks, ma- minimizing automobile usage by maximizing appeal of mass transit. Um, encouraging reduced parking and shared parking solutions and creating a livable community with convenient access. To commercial facilities. Uh, with uh number twenty-two to maximize the use of the rooftop open space for recreation and green roofs. And number twenty-four um to uh. Have all structures uh designed and maintained to improve the visual impact of Jersey City as viewed from within and beyond the city's borders. So overall, you know, the the um deviations requested uh can be granted and they meet both the positive and negative criteria. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wurstel. Um, as far as the. The extra five feet on the height. Um, you spoke about the surrounding area, the the Homestead Extension, um, you know, something with a corner bonus. Can you speak more to? You know, the general area in that zone rather than the areas surrounding?
Right, so the the context, this is in the uh zone four. Um. Generally, uh. This, this, um, this block is sort of unusual in the zone four in the fact that. Um, it's sort of segmented. You've got the Homestead Place Extension, which goes straight through the middle of the block. And you've got a much higher height there. Um, and it, so this block is a little unusual in terms of what you would expect to see in a zone four. Which is really, um, you know, throughout the whole um redevelopment area. Um, so this block, because it's a little different, I think that this height is more appropriate here than maybe somewhere else in a zone four. Um, in addition, like I said, it's because the the block is segmented, we only have a couple of buildings on either side of us. Um, you know, there's only a couple of properties on either side uh that are between these two other potential. Well, we know that the Homesteadic place extension's being developed, it's being developed much taller than this. And then at the corner, you have the option for a much taller building. So this provides a nice context in between these two development um potent, you know, these two uh much taller. Buildings, one we know is being built and one that's potential. Um, so it provides sort of a a good context. Um. In addition, this block is uh very close to what is um into to the to the um. To the path station, um, you know, and especially with the new access via. Um, the Homestead Place Extension, um, it's more appropriate. In this area for there to be a little bit higher density, higher intensity of development than maybe you would see elsewhere. In this sort of zone for throughout the redevelopment area, so that that's sort of what what I think makes this site in particular in this this block very different. And why it's more appropriate to see that height.
Okay, understood. My. My only concern is that sets precedent for the rest of the block at this point. Um, I I understand the density, you know, I I think it's appropriate considering how close we are to the path station. Uh, I'm just concerned about. You know, setting us up for the future that we're granting this deviation and that's gonna be the norm for the block for anybody else coming in.
If I could add, I I think if you look at this site, it's seventy-five hundred square feet, so it's a larger site. So I think that distinguishes it from from other sites on the block. Uh, we also, if um, this is actually, I know it's. It's the the Homestead twenty-nine to twenty-nine cottage is the twenty-eight-story building directly behind it. Uh, and then and then you have the the twenty-five to twenty-nine of Van Ripen, twenty twenty-seven story directly across the street. And and beside it, so a- as Carolyn uh mentioned, I think that really kinda. Insulates this a little bit, that it's not, it's not like the other, you know, the other uh uh properties along Van Ripen.
Okay, understood. Um, all right, anybody else for uh Ms. Wurstel? I have no other questions.
I do not.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay, so that that would, that completes our presentation. I just know for the record that we did review Mr. Uh Krill's. Uh, staff report and uh in the event this was approved, we, the conditions are acceptable.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for a public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
I see someone's hand up.
Voting, Brian.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Brian. Let me just swear in before you go, all right, if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Uh, Brian, B R I E N, Danko, D A N K O.
Thank you. Mr. Danko, good evening. We have three minutes.
Hi, how are you? Finally, we need a couple of seconds. I would just note that uh currently, these three lots are not under the same ownership. And we would hope that they will be placed under the same ownership and consolidated, I'm sure Chuck knows that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, eventually, when when my, in the event it's approved, when when I, when my client is. Ready to develop the property, it would be all be put under one uh one ownership and and consolidate.
Excellent. That's all. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Danko. We appreciate it. All right, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hands. Once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Mr. Chair, I see no more public. I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Tim, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, not not really, just the kind of echoing what Ms. Uh Wurstel said, um. Uh, given the lot size of the uh development and uh the zone that it's in, uh. It really feels like appropriate development for the area, given its proximity to the Homestead Place Extension. Um. Uh, Chairman Langston, I understand your concerns with the the. The kind of staging of building sizes going in between um. That the other side, uh, you know, I think this section of cottage is a little different than. Other sections of zone four that are around the Homestead Place Extension, um. Especially uh parts of Van Ripen that uh have uh some more historic pieces to it. Um. But overall, given the lot size and given the zone that it's in and that. You know, six stories is allowable under. Zone four, plenty feels it's appropriate development for the location and proves of the application.
Okay, thanks, Tim. We appreciate it.
Would you like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash zero one five presented to us tonight?
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Dr. DeSar.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipskine.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
And Commissioner Green.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
I'm gonna vote. I'd like to thank Ms. Wurstel for the clarification on. On the variances. I think the cases, I think she's made the case well, and I agree. I'm gonna vote I.
All in favor, motion passed stack conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Mike, I don't know that we're gonna get another opportunity for a break. Do you want to take five?
I was thinking the same thing. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, it's not looking promising. Okay, so let's take five, everybody. It's eight twenty-eight. We'll be back at eight thirty-three.
And Len Savino.
Tom Bauer as well.
Oh, Tom Bauer also.
Okay, we got everyone.
Okay. I think the next thing I probably should do to take care of some very basic housekeeping is. Ask if Santo is on the line and ask him, I filed, both of these cases are notice cases. I filed affidavits of service and publication for both on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Counsel, if you're out there, can you confirm receipt? And that the notices are in order?
Just bear with me, counsel.
Sure.
Counsel, the good news is I am in possession of both. Just trying to. Okay, so this one is the subdivision. This one is the same. So counsel and chairman, I am receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application that is number thirteen on the agenda. It's case P two-two dash one-three-six. The preliminary and final major subdivision with C variances all does appear to be in order. We're gonna mark this as A one for the record. Counsel, it's really up to you how we maintain the record. You want to mark individually for the cases. I understand you're gonna have some crossover presentation with. Obviously, a vote on the subdivision and then the vote on the preliminary and final site plan, but. Do you want to mark one is A one and one is A two? I would prefer to keep them separate by case number.
Then we can certainly do that. So then, so then for the site plan, we would, once you confirm it's acceptable, we would call that one A one also, correct?
That is correct under case P two-two dash one-three-seven.
That that is acceptable to me, counsel.
Okay.
The one issue, we can sever our slide presentation between the subdivision and the site plan also. How you can help me do that, but I'll tell you where it is. We should do that.
Let's do it that way. So we try to keep this as clean as possible. So A one on case P two-two one-three-six is the notice affidavit of publication proof of mailing. It was published for tonight's meeting. It all does appear to be in order. So that's A one on case P two-two one-three-six. On case P two-two dash one-three-seven, the preliminary and final major site plan with respect to the properties. Eight oh eight Pavonia Avenue at Al. We will mark that as A one. And I've had the opportunity to review that. All does appear to be in order with that notice and publication affidavit of service proof of mailing. And we will mark that as A one on case P two-two one-three-seven. And obviously, chairman, the list is the same for both applications since it is the same property.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Okay, um, thank you, counsel. I'm I will clarify that just a little bit, but let me start. And I'll explain to you why in a second. So. Board members, this application involves the Journal Square twenty-sixty redevelopment plan. This is two applications for one project. First, we're gonna present the subdivision application to you, and we are going to follow it up immediately with the site plan application. Now, case P twenty-two one-three-six is the subdivision. Application, the request for approval of a preliminary and final major subdivision. It involves block nine four oh four lots thirty-four, thirty-five and forty-one. As well as block one zero six zero one lot thirty-eight and thirty-nine. But in that block, it does not involve lot forty-one. Because lot forty-one is actually owned by the city of Jersey City. It is the Lowe's Theater. So property. So the subdivision application does not involve the Lowe's Theater property. The purpose of the subdivision is very simply to consolidate the five lots that I just referenced for you. And then separate them into two lots so that they can be then be used to be developed as part of a. Two-phase mixed-use project. Now, the second application, which is P twenty-two dash one-three-seven. Is the application for a preliminary and final site plan approval with deviations for the two-phase mixed-use project. Now that at this application involves block nine four oh four lots thirty-four, thirty-five and forty-one. And also block one zero six zero one lots thirty-eight and thirty-nine. And also lot forty-one, again, which is the Lowe's Theater property. Because the applicant is proposing to make improvements to the Lowe's Theater property as part of its site plan application. Now, so so there is a slight difference between the properties on the two.
Understood, counsel. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Now, the project itself. As I said, two-phase mixed-use project, phase one will be a forty-nine story mixed-use building with a one-story amenity structure. Phase two will be a fifty-five story building. With, oh, and and phase one will also involve some, the beginning of some significant. Public in public benefit improvements in the form of open space and walkways. That will be part of phase one, and then phase two will be a fifty-five story building. With the expansion or the completion of the public benefit improvements, the walkways and the open space. The total residential unit count for both phases of the project is eleven hundred and eighty-nine units. And and just as a housekeeping item, council chairman and vice chairman. The applicant's requesting a twelve-year vesting period under section fifty-two E of the municipal land use law for this project. As you know, for a project that's a hundred units or more with comprehensive development. This board is granted the power to extend the vesting period. Of a final site plan approval from the traditional two years to a a a time period determined by the board. Whatever the board believes is reasonable and fair. We believe twelve years is appropriate. This is a comprehensive two-phase project. And we would also ask the board to take into consideration that, and I will explain more about this to you in a minute. But the applicant has already entered into a redevelopment agreement with the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency. And that agency has baked into our redevelopment agreement. An approvals timetable that gives the applicant until two until twenty thirty-two. To complete both phases of this project. It's actually twenty thirty-two with some grace periods. So the applicant is requesting tonight when if you if you see to it to grant the preliminary and final site plan approval that we're requesting that you grant it with a twelve-year vesting period. Counsel.
So counsel, I've been encountering this more and more specifically with. The RDAs having been entered into. So you already have an RDA that provides. The third twenty thirty-two out date for construction?
We do, and 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 the RDA is actually part of the record here, which I I will explain to you in a moment.
So counsel, my comments to the board are, I would have no issue under the appropriate section of the statute. Going along with and tracking whatever period is set out for completion in the RDA.
Thank you.
So that sounds like it's less than twelve years, though. That's ten years.
It's ten years with some grace periods. There's there's a few six-month grace periods that we would likely be entitled to if we needed them. So that's the purpose of the request for twelve years.
Understood.
Um, just to continue, so I, I mentioned where, uh, this project is in the Journal Square twenty sixty, uh, redevelopment plan specifically. It's in zone ten, which is the cultural arts district. Uh, and zone ten offers, uh, developers of this particular property, uh, a number of different bonus options. And this project is proposing to utilize the open space, cultural arts and affordable housing bonus provision. Um, that bonus provision requires the applicant to enter into a redevelopment agreement with the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency and provide an executed copy of that agreement to the planning board. Now, we have already done that. Um, this applicant has been designated the redeveloper of this property by the JCR. That was in May of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the applicant and the JCR entered into a redevelopment agreement dated August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. And we filed a copy, an executed copy of that agreement with the planning division as a supplement to our application on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. So we've satisfied the first requirements of the bonus provisions, uh, under the open space, cultural arts and affordable housing bonus. Uh, now the redevelopment plan, as well as now the redevelopment agreement, requires, um, the applicant to make a financial contribution to the cultural arts fund. That, that fund is a city of Jersey City fund, so that's where the contribution would be made in an amount determined by the redevelopment agreement. Uh, we have agreed to make such contribution, um, to the city. It is outlined in the agreement that we have filed as part of our application. And then in turn, uh, the redevelopment plan and now the redevelopment agreement grants to the applicant certain height and floor area bonuses in amounts codified in the redevelopment agreement. So we have also satisfied that requirement. Now, zone ten of the redevelopment plan, uh, allows this property to have primary towers on the site to be thirty-seven stories and three hundred and ninety feet. The bonus provisions that are codified in the redevelopment agreement allow the first primary tower for this project, which you will see as building one, to be forty-nine stories and five hundred and sixty feet. Uh, the second primary tower will be permitted, which will be known as building four, will be permitted to be six hundred and fifty feet and fifty-five stories. Um, also, the redevelopment agreement allows this project to have floor area totaling one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand gross square feet. Um, which is in excess of the eight hundred and fifty thousand gross square feet provided without the bonus. Um, so you will be seeing a slide that will lay that, those bonus provisions out to you. But just so you know, those bonus provisions are codified in our redevelopment agreement as required by the Journal Square twenty sixty redevelopment plan. Now, one other thing, this project, um, this property received an approval, uh, from this board in two thousand seventeen uh, for the exact same number of units, eleven hundred and eighty-nine residential units. But that project, uh, utilized a different bonus provision under zone ten. It utilized the cultural facilities bonus, which focused more on cultural facilities. Our project that we are presenting to you tonight will provide and focus on some really incredible open space, uh, landscaping and artwork and art walk that will link, uh, the developing arts community in Journal Square. Um, it will serve the neighborhoods adjacent to the project. It will serve the Lowe's Theater. Um, basically, the walkways and opus, open space will run the entire length of the site from Brian Place all the way up to the end of the site Magnolia Avenue, and then will extend, uh, along the perimeter of the Lowe's Theater building. So those are the, uh, public benefit improvements I described previously. Um, they will be done in two phases, as I also mentioned. Uh, you're going to hear terms tonight, uh, and see plans that reference Magnolia Plaza, Concord West, an alternative path access corridor and an art walk. Uh, those are all terms that are components of the open space and the walkways that you are going to see from our presenters tonight. You are also going to hear, uh, and see terms called the Pavonia Van Ripen Street Connector. That is a road that the redevelopment, uh, plan requires us to construct, um, to connect what are currently two dead-end streets that would be Pavonia Avenue and Van Ripen. Um, so this is not an amendment to the previously approved application for this site. Uh, this is an entirely new application. Uh, you are also going to see and hear references to the Lowe's loading dock. Uh, and, um, the applicant has agreed, uh, to reserve sixty-four hundred square feet of the portion of this site that is immediately adjacent to the Lowe's property. Um, and convey it for nominal consideration to the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency so that it can be further conveyed to the city of Jersey City and used by the city to construct the one-story loading dock facility to serve the Lowe's Theater. Uh, that's another goal and intent of the redevelopment plan that's being satisfied by this project. We will show you where that is, uh, it's, it's part of our presentation. The other thing you're going to see is an easement plan. Uh, the redevelopment plan and this redevelopment agreement, uh, that the applicant has entered into with the JCR uh, require the applicant not only to build, maintain and provide this publicly, oh, this, uh, open space and these walkways, but we are required to declare by easement them to be publicly accessible, open space. So we are going to show you an easement plan. And you should know that the redevelopment agreement that the applicant has signed already summarizes in detail uh, descriptions of the easement that will coincide with the plan we are going to show you. That is another requirement of the redevelopment plan. Uh, in terms of council outreach, uh, municipal council outreach, that is, uh, the applicant has contacted and discussed this project with, uh, councilman, ward councilman Rich Bajano. And in terms of community outreach, the applicant has met with the journal representatives of the Journal Square Community Association. Um, so, uh, council, uh, chairman, I see you put your screen on, do you have a question for me?
No, no, I'm just getting ready.
Oh, okay, uh, one last thing, the plans for approval that, uh, that we are presenting tonight. Uh, architectural plans pervade prepared by Hand, Handel Architects, fifty-seven sheets, uh, A zero, uh, zero, 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 two, eight, two, two, twelve, uh, civil engineering plans prepared by Langin, twenty-two sheets, CS zero, zero, one through CS five oh four and landscaping plans prepared by Malilla Bauer and Carmen, sheet zero through L twenty-seven, all dated or la, all last dated August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Um, okay, I have my subdivision. Uh, oh, I have one more housekeeping item to explain to you, and I would ask Mr. Shang, my, um, my slide presenter to bring up, Steven, could you bring up the principal points? Thank you. So, uh, commissioners, we have a significant amount of deviations in this application. They are all design deviations. Um, nine of them involve signage. We were trying to think of a efficient way to prep, present them to the board. So what we have done is we have taken our principal point statement, which I think you're all aware is the statement we file with our application that lets the planning division and the board know where we have deviations. It cites the sections, it explains what the requirement is, and then it tells, tells the board and, and the planning division what the deviation actually is and the proposal. What we have done is we have used our principal points and we, we have taken the numbers in them. You see they're numbered one through, it's actually twenty-five. Um, we have coded our presentation to coincide with these numbers so that the principal points will link to the slides that we will present. We think it's probably a faster way of getting through the deviations than explaining each section number in detail. Um, so you are going to see slides that have these numbers on it. Um, that's, that's what those numbers will mean, they will coincide to this principal points. Uh, having said that, I think I can call my first witness, uh.
Slow down, counsel.
Okay.
Mr. McCann, I think you successfully won the award for the longest introduction ever in his.
I know that, it's a, it's a, I'm trying to, uh, to cut back on the amount of presentation time.
So counsel, it sounds to me like we are going to see these slides coinciding with this principal point, we're going to have to mark this as a separate exhibit?
No, this would be part of our site plan application exhibits, it's already built into it.
But this has been parsed out in some manner?
Only by number?
Whole slide or no?
Uh, you will see a slide that will probably have on it deviations five, six and seven, for example. So, and, and the presenter will explain the deviation, but the number on this slide will correlate directly to this document.
And the sheet in the set?
Yes, exactly.
Now, counsel, how many witnesses?
Five altogether.
And is it fair to say that you're going to take at least two hours in direct testimony?
I would hope not, I would hope we can, we can do this in an hour, let, an hour and a half or less.
So I'm a betting man, Mr. McCann, and I don't think you can do it in less than an hour and a half, but Mr. Langston, we're going to find out, so. We'll keep, should we keep everybody else sitting around, Mr. McCann? That's really the question.
Yeah, that, that's, uh, I.
Sad. Do you want to be the guy behind you?
Well, I often am the guy behind someone else. I think you guys know that.
You can never be the guy behind you, but you're often the guy behind Chuck Harrington, so.
Hi, um. So I, I think the, the first award is going to go to Stephen Joseph tonight. Um, I believe Mr. Mecca has, uh, conceded to carry to October twentieth, and that reward would come with, uh, being first up on that agenda, uh, can we bring?
Twentieth, chairman?
September twentieth, uh, do we have Mr. Joseph?
Are we off the record on this application now?
Yes, I'm sorry, counsel, uh, let's go off the record on, uh, items thirteen and fourteen and, uh, we'll see, uh, if anybody wants to carry at this point.
Let's stop sharing the screen for the time being.
Good evening, everyone, uh, the applicant does consent, uh, with preservation of notice to carry to the next level hearing, which sounds like is September, uh, twentieth or twenty-second, twenty.
September twentieth is our next, uh, hearing, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Joseph, we appreciate it, and, uh, I'll make sure that you're up first on that agenda. Uh, so we're going to carry case P two, two dash one, three, five or six, sixty-five to six, sixty-nine Grand Street to a date certain September twentieth with preservation of notice.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, uh, do we still have, uh, going down the list, Mr. Harrington still on board?
I've received communication that Mr. Harrington is currently communicating with his client about carrying, so, um, yeah, it, it, he, he is, but he wants confirmation from his client.
Okay, not a problem, um, all right, we have Mr. Revellini with his hand up, we, uh, he's promoted, uh, I believe he's promoted.
Yes, and he's unmuted.
Hello?
We have you, counsel.
Okay, yes.
Can, uh, turn your, your video on?
I'm trying here. Well, look, can you hear me?
We can, that's fine.
That's good enough.
If you. I like to be face to face, but that's fine.
I would like to too, but just to move things along, it's fine to carry us, and I would just ask not to have to renotice.
Absolutely, counsel, so we're going to carry, uh, case P two, two dash one, one, nine is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for five fifty to five sixty tunnel we have to a date certain October twentieth with preservation of no, I'm sorry, September twenty, preservation of notice. And, uh, Cam, let's, uh, let's put that application number two on that date, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, we appreciate you hanging in there. And, uh, we'll hear back from Mr. Harrington, I assume, so, uh, Mr. McCann, the floor is yours, sir.
You have till ten thirty-six.
Back on the record, okay, all right, here we go. Um, so my first witness, uh, is on the subdivision case. Uh, it's Mr. Len Savino from Langin.
Hi, Len, I'm sorry, Ian.
Okay.
Get ready, right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state by your name, please?
Certainly, it's Leonard Savino, uh, first name L E O N A R D, last name S A V as in Victor, I N O.
Thank you.
Mr. Savino, good evening, uh, we've qualified you in the past, your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it, you're qualified.
Okay.
Len, I'm going to let you take it away.
Sure, so, uh, we're going to start with the subdivision. Um, I'm going to run through very briefly the existing and proposed configuration, which is, uh, from our major subdivision plan, drawing the CB one, zero, three, which is shown on the screen currently. So we have five lots in the existing condition, you can see them in the existing lot configuration. That's being, uh, pointed to at this moment. Um, the five lots total two point two one acres, the entire site. Uh, they are designated by block nine, four, zero, four lots thirty-four, thirty-five and forty-one. And block one, zero, six, zero, one lot thirty-eight and thirty-nine. In the existing condition, it's just worth noting, uh, to orient you, um, up on the sheet would be the site being bounded by the path, uh, tracks to the north and east. Brian Place, Van Ripen, Pavonia and Magnolia Avenues to the west and the existing Lowe's Theater to the south. So that represents the existing configuration and the proposed configuration, which is just below that on our plan. We are subdividing, uh, the site into two lots designated as block nine, four, zero, four lot thirty-four point zero one and block one, zero, six, zero, one, a lot thirty-four point zero two, uh, also two point two one acres. So, um, one thing that I need to note is that we do have a deviation as part of this application for the shape factor, uh, what is required is a maximum of twenty-eight. Um, and we do have one exceedance of the two, that is block nine, four, zero, four lot thirty-four, oh, one, which is to the upper left, which, uh, to the north it would be, and that actually has a shape factor of thirty-five point zero five, exceeding the maximum of twenty-eight. Jim, that's what we have.
Uh, my next witness on the subdivision application is Charles Height, the professional planner. Uh, and counsel, while Charles is coming up, uh, this is our only exhibit. We have two exhibits for the, uh, for the subdivision application, it's the previous slide. Um, which is CB one, oh, three without the deviation called out, and it's this slide um, with the deviation called out in red, those are the two subdivision exhibits.
Do you want to mark those as A two and A three?
Yes, sir.
Those are, okay, so we'll mark those as A two and A three on case P two, two dash one, three, six.
Okay, Charles.
Yes, thank you.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state by your name?
Yes, Charles Height, spelled H E Y D T.
Uh, Mr. Height, good evening. Just one second before we qualify you, uh, Mr. Savino, is this the last we're gonna see you tonight?
No, I will be providing testimony for the site plan application as well.
Okay, so as far as the subdivision goes, before we move on, does anybody from the board have any questions for Mr. Savino? Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, so, Mr. Height, let's get to you. Uh, we've qualified you in the past. Uh, your license is current tonight?
Still current tonight, yes.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you. Um, this is a deviation that is a relationship between the perimeter of the proposed property and the area. Um, it essentially tries to regulate, uh, assembling properties within Journal Square and its other, other places in Jersey City that have like a manipulated, uh, property shape so as to acquire a certain lot size. Um, that's not the case with this application and, and the proposed shape factor for lot thirty-one oh one. Um, as was mentioned, to the north is the path cut. Um, a lot of the irregularity comes out of the ends of Bryant Place, uh, Van Ripen Avenue and Pavonia. You can see there the end of the blocks currently. These are essentially dead end right of ways. Um, and that's where the jogging, if you will, occurs. Um, as was mentioned by Mr. Savino, uh, the intent here is to, uh, merge the five properties uh, into two separate properties, uh, and essentially accommodate a, a two-phase development, uh, across the two properties. Um, that's really the intent, um, of the zoning here. Um, so that's as I see it, um, meeting the physical, uh, hardship case that, that can be advanced by this board to justify the deviation. With respect to the negative criteria, I don't see any substantial detriment to the general welfare. Again, um, as you'll see, uh, in, in a few moments, the proposed development is well-regulated by the zone ten requirements. But for this one deviation, um, their suitable size, um, and we do have certain provisions in place to mitigate any impacts to adjacent properties. Uh, as it relates to the zone plan and zoning ordinance, zone ten, um, is what you see in the proposed boundary of these two parcels. Um, so it's really, uh, consistent with the redevelopment plan. And just to quote, uh, zone, and this is the purpose of one, uh, from the purpose of zone ten, um, the zone will provide bonuses, oh, sorry. Yep, for newly built cultural facilities and public open space connections between them. Um, you'll see the, the connections being proposed. Uh, this property, uh, is linear in nature and will be able to accommodate a, a linear pedestrian walkway. Um, so that's the testimony to help justify this deviation in the subdivision application.
Thank you, Mr. Height. That concludes our subdivision presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Height. Anybody, any questions for Mr. Height on the subdivision?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Height.
Uh, recall Mr. Len Savino to commence presenting our, uh, application for preliminary and final site plan approval.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so I wanna take a minute and just describe the existing conditions to get everyone oriented and understand what is on the site right now. So the site is currently occupied by four, uh, floor level parking garage, roughly twenty-five thousand square foot footprint. An asphalt grade, uh, parking lot, at grade. Uh, revenue control islands, um, and a grass area that is over near the Bryant Place, uh, frontage. The existing site access, uh, and circulation is through two points of entry and exit. Um, and they are at the terminus of Pavonia Avenue and also Magnolia Avenue. There is no access, uh, from Van Ripen Avenue. Um, with respect to the existing grades along the site, um, we have, uh, an elevation down on the, the Bryant Place side, uh, pretty low at elevation sixty-seven. And then it slopes up, uh, going up towards sheet north and around in elevation, um, slopes range from about one percent to thirty-three, which thirty-three is predominantly in that area along Bryant Place. Um, and, um, flow back down to about elevation ninety-two of Pavonia and then back down to about eighty-six. Um, and, uh, on, on the southern edge, uh, contiguous to the, the Lowe's Theater. Um, stormwater on the site almost entirely, sheet flows off the site to the north into the, the path property along the eastern edge of the site. Uh, but a small amount of it is actually captured in two inlets at the end of Pavonia Avenue, which conveys back into the city system and Pavonia Avenue. So, I'd like to move into the proposed improvements.
Len, just one, one question. The, the existing parking deck will, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I know where you're going, Jim. In the, uh, proposed improvements, uh, actually here's some existing photos, um, just to give you an idea of orientation. Uh, the, the garage that's existing there is shaded so that you can just see how only a portion of the site has existing garage, uh, but the at-grade parking is to the left of that and the photos are identifying which direction based on the arrows. So, um, I wanna talk a little bit about, um, the proposed conditions and what we, uh, are considering on the site. So, as Jim was about to mention, the proposed, uh, the existing parking garage rather, and the parking lot will be demolished to accommodate the proposed development. This is actually a color, a color rendered site plan. Um, and that was submitted, the site plan was submitted, but this was not submitted. I'm not sure, Jim, is this will be an exhibit or is this a part of a larger exhibit?
So this is an exhibit. It's part of our site plan application and this is actually the, this actually is our site plan. But what we did for purposes of presenting it to the board is colorize it. Um, so that some of the things Len is gonna talk about could be more easily identified by the board.
Gonna mark this as A two on case P two-two dash one three seven?
Yes, and, and quite honestly, all the slides that you're gonna see could be marked as A two if you would like to, um, do it in bulk, because everything else you're gonna see from here on in is part of the site plan application.
Do you have an idea of how many sheets it is and is it in order?
Including renderings, there's probably about seventy-two. We're not gonna speak about all of them, but I think that's the entirety of the package.
All right, so we'll mark it as A two. It'll be the entire seventy-two sheets, which we can then submit after the hearing as A two.
We will do that.
Very good, counsel.
Thank you. So to continue, uh, I wanted to describe the proposed improvements. Uh, it's important to note that these improvements do provide a higher and better use for the site with significant public access and pedestrian circulation. So the overall site improvements, there are three buildings proposed to be constructed in two phases. And what we've done on this plan, uh, just to clarify for everybody is we've added a heavy dashed red line on between site six and what's shown there is building one to give you a, an idea of our southern edge and, uh, also on the opposite side, on the north side, a similar red dashed line so that you can understand clearly that all of that is structure with below grade parking. To the left of that going north is at grade with no structure beneath. So we thought it was important just to add that, just for clarification. So as we're walking through and describing this, you'll have that picture in mind. So phase one, which is, uh, actually one thing I didn't mention is there a division line shown on here, our subdivision, which we just described. Um, uh, is being pointed to that, that heavy dashed line that is not red, but is black is the dividing line between phase one and phase two. Phase one is to the south, sheet right, phase two is to the north sheet left. So phase one includes building one, uh, which is highlighted in purple air. Um, the overhang is highlighted in light purple, the structure itself in the darker purple, and that's the case for also, uh, over by building four. Um, just for clarification. So building one is a forty-nine story tower with five hundred ninety-five residential units, two hundred and thirty-five parking spaces with a footprint of fifteen thousand and forty-nine square feet. All parking below grade. Building two is a one-story parking garage entry, which is shown there and being pointed to, which gets you to the lower parking level. Um, and also building two has a gallery, uh, cafe and a rooftop pool amenity to serve the first residential tower. And that footprint is three thousand nine hundred, uh, four hundred and ninety-four square feet. Phase one also includes the vehicular turnaround area to the north uh, of building one shown there with the arrows, directional arrows. Um, it also provides access to the loading area, which is on the northeast face of the building. Uh, number one, and it, uh, is completely internal to building one, so the entire loading area is internal to building number one. Um, phase one also includes, uh, the pedestrian plaza to the north of building one. Uh, and that will be discussed in more detail, detailed by the project, uh, landscape architect. So phase two on the northern portion of the site, north of that heavy dashed line is, uh, to consist of building four, which is a fifty-five story tower with five hundred ninety-four residential units, one hundred and thirty-one parking spaces and a footprint of ten thousand four hundred and eighty-six square feet. So that brings the total parking to three sixty-nine for both phases, all entirely below grade with only one access point, and that is at building two right off of Pavonia Avenue. Uh, also proposed in phase two, all the way in the north and fronting on Bryant Place in site seven is a dog park and other uh, open space. So I wanted to just mention also the traffic directional signage on the sites. There are stop signs provided, uh, in the four-way intersection at Pavonia Avenue at each of the stops. And there are pedestrian crossing signs that are provided on the pedestrian, at the pedestrian crossing locations along the connector roadway between Pavonia and Van Ripen Avenue as well. So with respect, in respect to vehicular access, there will be two-way access from both Pavonia and Van Ripen Avenue. That's what's proposed. There will no longer be access from Magnolia Avenue to our site. And the connector road, um, as Jim had mentioned, from Van Ripen Avenue to Pavonia Avenue, which connects the two phases um, are both is a two-way street. Um, I just wanna reiterate from that two-way street that the only access to parking below grade is at building two and that one location right off of Pavonia. So there are two deviations worth mentioning that, uh, will be, uh, I know J, uh, Charles will be speaking to, but I wanna mention now as part of the site feature with respect to circulation. Those two deviations are related to radii, uh, curb radii. The maximum that is permitted is eight foot. Uh, we are proposing twelve foot at the intersection of four locations to, uh, at Pavonia is pointed out, and the reason for that is to accommodate the emergency vehicle circulation. We have run, uh, emergency vehicle circulation trucks and, uh, needed to flatten them out a little bit from eight to twelve. Um, also, uh, there are two fifteen-foot radii over by building four is pointed out um, by the arrows there. One is to access the loading dock and the other one is actually on the bend around the corner there. And in, in that case also is for, uh, emergency vehicle circulation. With respect to pedestrian circulation, that will be provided from Kennedy Boulevard along the Lowe's Theater, so sheet right from the south. You're approaching the site? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Let's go back to, to sheet eleven. Thank you. That's the inset sheet. Okay, go ahead, Len.
Okay. Yeah, so there's the connecting point up at Kennedy Boulevard and pedestrians will flow from Kennedy Boulevard along the Lowe's Theater continue down until, uh, they reach what is shown there as a match line by site six across the proposed, um, loading dock for the Lowe's Theater. And then as you see that, again, that heavy red line, uh, dashed line is where our project begins and we begin, um, our continued, or continue the pedestrian flow. So that flow will then go up through the art walk. And we're showing a four percent slope there up through that location between buildings one and building two. And then northward through the plaza area, pedestrians can flow freely up along from phase one into phase two and continue all the way over to the steps at the amphitheater where the heavy red line denotes the end of the structure. Those stairs bring you down at, uh, into the grade of the park, the park and, uh, the dog park area in site seven of Brian, uh, Brian's place. So pedestrian access will also be provided from Pavonia and Magnolia avenues, uh, with the appropriate stripe pedestrian crossings and bollards proposed for pedestrian safety at key locations at the Pavonia Avenue intersection. And also a key of locations along the Pavonia and Van Ripen Avenue connector roadway. So with respect to Bill, I'm sorry.
Just, just one second, Len. I'm so, uh, Commissioner, so site six, which is shaded in gray is not actually part of our property, just to be clear, that's, that's the, uh, well, actually that is part of our property, but that's the area of the property that we have reserved pursuant to our redevelopment agreement uh, to be used, to be conveyed to the J C R A and used by the city to construct a loading dock to serve the Lowe's Theater. On the inset that you see below, um, that area of land, we also do not own the, the, um, the pedestrian area that is owned by the city. Uh, but we anticipate entering into a license agreement with the city after we get this, if we, if we receive the site plan approval that will then allow us to make improvements to, to that walkway area, which is immediately adjacent to the Lowe's building. Uh, you can continue, Len.
Okay. Uh, with respect to, uh, building services, uh, trash and recycling operations are proposed within both towers, which minimizes potential conflicts between pedestrians and service vehicles. And there's one loading area for each tower, twenty-two foot wide, and they're provided at the north faces, as I mentioned before, building number one, right off the turnaround. And for building number four, it's at the location that we indicated prior that we needed uh, some deviation for the, the curb radii. And both will have direct connections to building services, and that's gonna be described in more detail by the project architect. And lastly, from building four, there will be pedestrian circulation, uh, from Van Ripen Avenue up to the building for entrances, which are around the bend. You see the two entrances there and there's a little drop-off area as well. So this plan, what we're also shown is just these four yellow boxes to give you an, an idea of the proposed grading on the site. I had mentioned the existing before, and this is how we're, uh, we're navigating through the site with respect to grades. So the first point is at elevation eighty-six, shown right there at the beginning, where between building six, building one and site six. As we begin to slope up through the art walk, um, and the finished floor of building number two to your left as you're walking up will be at eighty-nine. And as you continue up, you have, uh, building one, um, at finished floor of elevation ninety-three. Uh, just to note, Pavonia Avenue is approximately elevation at its terminus, about ninety-one to ninety-two. So, um, that's what we were striving for, to have a smooth transition from Pavonia into that area. And then you see, um, elevation ninety-two is a point we're shown there just in the center of the turnaround to give you an idea what the plaza area elevation is. Uh, the proposed elevation there, and as you continue along the walk and the connector road, uh, the grade starts to come down and you see building four finished floor, we set at elevation ninety-one, which also gives you a smooth transition, transition into the Van Ripen, uh, existing elevation at our property and the terminus of Van Ripen. Uh, the grades continue as you're walking down towards the amphitheater, um, you come to elevation eighty-seven and then you're in the stairway going down um, which will be described in a bit more detail into the, uh, site seven dog park area with, uh, a grade as it continues to slope down to elevation sixty-seven, notably lower in Bryant Place. Uh, it's important to note that the plaza and the roadways have been designed with slopes less than five percent and all ADA accessible routes to the building have been designed for ADA requirements. So a couple of other things to mention, uh, stormwater drainage and sanitary, uh, sewer connections always very important. Um, the stormwater can, management conveyance were designed in accordance with the recently adopted NGDP stormwater rules and also, uh, City of Jersey City stormwater regulations. Um, and it's interesting, you know, whereas most of the site is currently draining to the path property to the northeast and east. Uh, the proposed design addresses all stormwater on the site through several onsite subservice detention systems. And we have had multiple discussions with, uh, JCM, who have representatives to come up with a design, um, and accommodate them as well and some of their requests, and that has been incorporated into our design. Formal applications for water and soil will be submitted and in the near future. Formal applications for water and soil will be submitted and in the near future. Uh, other utilities, we've been coordinating with utility companies and we have, uh, shown them in our, our project set. Um, I don't want to go into detail. If there are questions, we certainly can go through them, um. And answer them if you have any related to other utilities. Um. A couple of other plans left here to talk through. One is the phasing and then easement. So phasing is a. Uh, you know, we, we put this here just to give you a nice color picture because it, it helps us collectively remember the phases a little bit better. Um, and we just wanted you to note the, where again, as I mentioned that. The uh, transition from phase one to phase two will be. Between the two-phase line right in the middle where the subdivision line is. So we have met the requirements that the, uh, twenty-six to be development plan with respect to the phasing plan. What I'd like to go through now, um, is my last, uh, plan.
So Len. Um, I don't think we need to go through this in detail, but, um, this is part of your filed civil site plans, correct?
That is correct.
And we have colorized it, uh, for presentation purposes, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and this represents, uh, colorized versions of the different easements that we are required to offer. To the city through the redevelopment plan and agreement. That will provide public access for the various areas, correct?
That is correct.
And, and they are colorized and they have different, they have different names. But for all intents and purposes. The purple, the salmon, the light blue and the dark and the purple all represent easement areas. Uh, being granted to the city for public access.
Correct.
Okay, pedestrian or vehicle?
Yes, and then the, the purple long dash would be the two fifty-foot wide access to phase zone two. At the terminus of Povonia and then.
Correct, thank you. And the light green represents the area being conveyed to the J C R A for the. City to construct a loading dock, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Unless the board has more questions about this. Um, these easements are memorialized and set forth in our redevelopment agreement.
Uh, and is that Mr. Savino's testimony tonight?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. I have no questions, Mr. Savino. Anybody else?
No, I don't.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate, appreciate the detail.
My pleasure.
Uh, call my next witness, Mr. Gary Handel from Handel Architecture.
Gary, I swear you're in.
Great.
He's swearing his testimony you give tonight. It's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Gary, G R Y, Handel, H A N D E L.
Thank you.
Mr. Handel, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Uh, your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Great, thank you so much. Um, so, uh, we're very pleased to, uh, present the architectural plans for, um, eight oh eight Povonia, uh, tonight. And I also, uh, would like to thank the, the board for its patience and forbearance. Um, with our long, um, presentation, um, but it's all due to the complexity of the project that we're presenting to you. The, um, our office has, um, you know, been working on this project for the last year or so, and we're also responsible for the architecture. Um, of the Journal Square developments, which are on the other side, um, of the path terminal. Um, one, one of the goals of the Zone Ten Cultural Arts District is to connect Journal Square to matter, uh, contemporary. Um, and to the growing cultural community that's surrounding these develops. Um, this site and, and this project, um, will be completing the largest section of that new construction. Um, so we'll be undertaking everything from what we call the front door. Um, all the way down to the end of the dog park there, um, which takes you to Brian place. Um, so this will be a significant, um. Um, chunk of that, you know, of that work in terms of, you know, connecting, um, these various cultural endeavors that the city has undertaken. Um, within that, we're trying to create a variety of, of experiences along the, the primary pedestrian path. Which we're calling the art wa, the art walk. And so that begins at JFK. On as, uh, Mr. McCann, uh, you know, announces basically work that will be undertaken. Um, in consultation and coordination, um, with the city, which is the owner of the property. Past, uh, the Lowe's Theater, um, past the Lowe's loading dock, which you can see, um, indicated there. Through what we call the connector between site one and bu, uh, building one and building two. Uh, through the town square, um, uh, along building four and then pass the art space and to the dog park. Um, the, and, uh, so let's go next. Um, and here's a conceptual site plan showing, uh, buildings one, two and four. Um, with buildings one and two in phase one and building four in phase two. Um, to the right, we can see the Lowe's Theater, uh, and the beginnings of the art walk, um, in the, in the colored, um, pavement there. Um, Tom Bauer will be talking about the landscaping design later in the presentation. Um, and then you can also see the portion of land that'll be given to Lowe's to construct to, uh, to the J C R A. Um, to con, to construct the loading dock for Lowe's, um, there and how that, um, interfaces with, you know, with our property. And then you can see building four, um, the phase two line along with the art space and the dog park. Um, Tom Bauer will talk more about that in the future. Um, so to reiterate, um, as both Tom and Len pointed out, this will be a two-phase. Um, project in phase one, uh, in, uh, building one, it'll be a forty-nine story building. With five hundred and ninety-five units, um, building two, um, which you can see in the lower left, um, hand slide indicated, uh, there. Um, will be a one-story gallery cafe pavilion and then in phase two, um, that will be building four at fifty-five stories with five hundred and ninety-four units. The image on the right is of you looking at the project from the path tracks where you can see building one to the left. And building four to the right. The image on the left is a view of the podium of building one and the outdoor, um, uh, pool deck of building two. Um, at the bottom right of the image. And you can also start to see the overall massing of the buildings with a sense of the vertical fins and the vertical character, um, of the architecture of these buildings. The gradient shaft, um, of the towers and the sculptural crowns at the very top of the building, which will be described. Um, you know, in more detail in later slides. Um, as, uh, Jim mentioned, um, you know, the, the bonus provisions are codified in the redevelopment. Um, agreement. And so this, um, zoning diagram in three D. Um, illustrates the as-of-right number of stories, thirty-seven, and the proposed number of stories with bonus, you know, as described in the redevelopment agreement. As Len mentioned, um, all parking will be below grade in accordance with the Zone Ten Design Guidelines. So there'll be three levels of parking below grade. Uh, as Len mentioned, two hundred and thirty-eight spaces in phase one, a hundred and thirty-one spaces in phase two. Uh, with three hundred and sixty-nine spaces total. There'll also be bike storage rooms on level C two for phase one and level C one for phase two. Phase one will also have additional storage, um, on the ground floor level for bikes. A park approximately three hundred spaces will be provided in each, uh, phase for a little more than six hundred bike spaces. Uh, which mean, which meets the requirements for the number of bike spaces for the project. Um, all incoming utilities, as described by Len earlier, will be located below grade on level C one. Um, and, uh, and go next. And here you can see in greater detail, the ground floor plan for both phase one on the right and phase two for the left. In blue, you can see our building lobbies directly off of the new Povonia Avenue, um, and, and Van Ripen Connector. Um, that Len mentioned, uh, that, um, and also adjacent to the pedestrian connection that takes you down, uh, past the Lowe's. Um, to JFK. In yellow on the main building pad is a cafe that is designed to activate the pedestrian sequence and across that, um, connector. Um, you can see the, the gallery and also in yellow, um, flanking the art walk as it enters the project site. Um, so that would be the gallery cafe. In light gray, you can see the ramp down to parking garage below, which is accessed directly off of Povonia as soon as you, you enter. Um, the site, um, and so, uh, it, in order to minimize, but any pedestrian conflicts. In light purple, it are the loading docks that Len, uh, mentioned, um, in both towers and at, in the back of house areas. Um, there'll be thirty-yard containers for trash handling in each of the building's loading docks. All loading and unloading will happen within the buildings. All truck turning movements will be done within our property and not on public streets. In the, uh, light blue, uh, is, um, uh, the bike storage that's directly accessible off of that turnaround area. In phase two, again, you can see the lobby accessed off of the public areas with the service areas located behind. To the right, you can also see the portion of land, uh, given, um, to Lowe's, um, to, you know, to the city for their dedicated loading. Um, dock as previously mentioned. Um, as. Jim mentioned in, um, in his presentation, the format, um, here, we, you know, um, basically references, um, those deviations on the principal points. And so there are a couple of deviations noted in red here, uh, which we feel will help to achieve the architectural goals of this zone and this project. And so you can see, um, number two, and Stephen, if you can just, um, point that out on the plan. Uh, the two buildings in phase one are connected by two lightweight bridges that span the art walk. Uh, the bridges provide additional emergency egress routes for occupants on the building to pu, building to pool deck. And will also help animate the art walk. And you'll see that in the renderings, we think it actually, um, activates those spaces in a very nice way. Um, for, uh, numbers five and seven, uh, those are related to storefront and, and street frontage. Um, the required emergency exits, loading dock, entry doors and mechanical spaces for a project of this scale. Reduce the overall amount of ground floor transparency. What we've done is we've made every attempt, um, at all public facing areas fully transparent and open to the public. Um, lining the pedestrian sequence with our lobbies, the galleries and cafes. We've tucked the entrances to parking and loading in places where they don't interfere with pedestrians. Um, so we've tried to fully meet the intent of the guidelines and we think we've taken a conservative approach to asking for this deviation. Um, for number eleven, um, we've set back building two, um, which is the gallery cafe building with the entrance, um. Um, into the parking garage, um, um, from the street line in order to keep, uh, pedestrian traffic flow at a safer distance. Um, from the parking garage entry and exit ramp. And for fifteen, we're requesting a back-end headout loading and a twenty-three foot wide driveway for access to the two-way parking ramp. Um, we've taken all truck movements onto our site and not onto public streets in an effort to minimize. Conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians and to prioritize the pedestrian in all cases. Additionally, the entrance to the parking garage is immediately off of Povonia Avenue. So drivers are directed away from the main pedestrian zones as soon as they, um, come into the site. Um, and so in the entire art walk, there's only, um, one crossing where, uh, vehicles actually have to, um, cross pedestrians cross, um, cross vehicles. I think when we go back and Charles would, um.
So Jim is. No, Garrett, continue. We're going to let Charles come in at the end. I think it'll be faster.
Okay. Um, working our way up the building, you can see the build-out of the second and third floor plans, which houses our amenity and mechanical spaces. Um, phase one is on the right, phase two is on the left. Um, bottom sheet is level two, uh, top sheet is level three. You can see the major amenity areas for the building and to light, the two lightweight bridge structures that I mentioned. Um, uh, you know, crossing the pedestrian, um, path below in gray on level three, uh, you can see the mechanical spaces. And go next. Here we're showing some of the typical residential floor plans, the two main, um, tranches of those plants, um, uh, with studios, one and two and three bedroom units. There are five hundred and ninety-five units again in building one, five ninety-four in building four, for a total of eleven hundred and eighty-nine units. Um, in terms of the mix of those, uh, thirty-four percent of those will be studios, fifty-one percent one bedrooms, thirteen percent. Two bedrooms and two percent three bedrooms. And at the top of house, uh, we have an upper sky lounge amenity area on level forty-eight for phase one. And level fifty-four for, um, for phase two. Um, and then on top of that, um, we have mechanical space. Uh, so we're going to show the, our renderings of the building as well, which will convey a little bit more of the character of the building, uh, but so here you can see. Um, uh, uh, straight on elevations of building one on the left and building four to the right. Uh, the buildings are divided into podium elements, which go up from the ground through the third floor. Um, the shafts of the tower, which rise from the podiums, um, to, uh, those amenity spaces that we just, um, described. Um, we'll talk a little bit more about the vertical nature of those. And each of the buildings will have a distinctive crown on it that, um, hovers above those upper, um, lounge amenity spaces that I just showed you in the plans. Um. Um, on, on terms of deviations, one deviation that we're requesting is related to building maintenance equipment, um, which is highlighted here in the red. Portions of the building maintenance unit must be exposed because of the pivoting telescopic arms, um, need to, um, swing out over the screen wall. And here you can see the north, east, south and west elevations of building one. And the organization of the podium shaft and crown. Uh, you can also see the slenderness, um, of the north end and south elevations in, in building one. And similarly here, we're showing same organization podium shaft and crown in the northeast, south and west elevations of building four. Um, you can see, um, in these elevations patterning on the facade, which will become a little bit more apparent. And the renderings, we're trying to do something a little bit different, um, here than an all-glass tower. And go next. And so here you can see a perspective rendering, uh, taken from JFK, um, and the path tracks. Um, which you had seen in an earlier slide, you can see the base of the building as it meets the plaza. Uh, phase one on the left and phase two on the right. You can see, uh, the aluminum fins defining the third, um, level here, creating a sense of verticality. Um, at, you know, at the base, which we'll show you a little bit more about on some of the detail renderings. Um, and that's an aesthetic feature of, um, both of these buildings. You can see the, the rhythm of the vertical metal plating running up the building, which breaks into different sets. Um, creating a gradient with profiles of metal panels, um, which will shift, um, as light moves around the building and as people move around the building as well. Um, you can see those crowns at the top of the building, um, which create a distinctive terminus, um, for each of the buildings. The idea is really to create these buildings as sculptural elements that integrate, um, uh, to their surroundings and the plazas, uh, at the podium levels. Um, where those rounded corners of each of those towers, um, reinforcing the sculptural quality of each of those buildings, um, as they're terminated against the sky. Um, you can see, um, some of the materiality, um, you know, that we've used here. And so at the bottom right, we can see a close-up of the aluminum fins that wrap up all the way around the podium base. The tower facade will be constructed, uh, you know, of a curtain wall with a series of vertical metal panels. Vision glass awning windows, shadow boxes and louvers. And at the top, um, of, you know, is an image of the pleated metal panels that make up the crown, um, uh, you know, at the tower. Um, if you look at the detail of the, you know, you know, of the, you, so you can see the gradient and the way that that's achieved is by, um, changing the profiling. Of those vertical metal panels that you see in the center slide, which will be done in a champagne, um, uh, you know, um, uh, which is a warm silver metal. The vision glass, the louvers and the shadow boxes. Um, and down at the lower slide, you can see the aluminum fin cladding, uh, for, uh, which we're using on both the rails and on the third floor. Um, in order to, uh, enhance that feeling of verticality. And go next. Um, here you can see a view of the connector space that takes you from the arrival plaza down to JFK. Um, building one, ground floor to the right, building two, the gallery cafe, um, on the left. You can see the transparent, uh, transparent storefront to the right that opens up. In our building, uh, you can also see the storefront, um, to the right, opening up to connect to the, uh, building one to the, uh, cafe, to the art walk. Activity in the hopes of animating this portion of the pedestrian sequence. And you can also, uh, begin to see here, those bridges spanning across the art walk that we talked about earlier, um, in our deviation request. Um, Tom will talk more about the materiality of the landscape elements. You can see here the stone bases, the metal color covers columns. And the aluminum fins that we talked about. On the left, you can see the idea for the gallery cafe, uh, building, uh, which is a mural art wall. Um, the art is indicative, you know, at this point, um, and then a glazed, um, ceramic tiles defining the building entrances there. Um, and so the palette of materials indicated here. And so the palette of materials indicated here, you know, on this slide. This is a view looking back at building one to the right of the image is that gallery cafe. And you get an idea of the indicative art wall. You can see the podium of building one with the entryway wrapped in the glazed ceramic tiles. The aluminum fins wrapping level two railings and level three amenity spaces. And the two lightweight bridges connecting the level two terraces with the vertical fins rising up behind that for the shaft of the building. And go next. Here we've overlaid the material examples just mentioned over the elevations of the building one podium. So the the glazed ceramic tiles, the corrugated metal, the vision glass. The art, you know, the art wall, shadow boxes and louvers and the stone base. We want to point out a few deviations that we're requesting related to the ground level and signage. For number four, as mentioned earlier in the presentation, there's a significant grade change to the site. And you can see this in the elevation at the bottom between the main town square at at the left and outside the Lowe's loading to the right. So the storefront needs to be stepped down to meet that slope. We tried to bring the storefronts as close as possible to meet grade, but due to the grade change. The storefront bulkheads are greater than the 18 inch high requested. So we're requesting 34 inches for building one. For number six, we're requesting a minimum floor to ceiling height of 16 feet for the ground floor ceiling height. This allows interiors ceilings to line up with the exterior soffit for greater continuity between interior and exterior spaces. Also, the minimum 16 feet requested would only occur at the residential lobby portion of the ground floor, which is to the left of the bottom elevation. For number 17, we're request requesting a 40 foot high, a 40 inch high wall scott signs for the cafe. To for the cafe use to better integrate with the scale of the tower columns, supporting a project of this size. For number 18, we're requesting two address signs over the two building entrances for building one. Two entries are proposed to allow for easier pedestrian movement across the site. We're also requesting for signage sponsors distributed on the building columns. To provide illumination along the pedestrian circulation zones and five directional signs placed along the art walk to direct pedestrians to building entrances. For 19, we're requesting two building address signs that are 26 square feet and 19 square feet. To fit with the scale of the building entryways and for 21, you can see to the left of the top elevation. We're requesting a bicycle symbol sign to direct bicyclists to the bike storage area. And so here you can see a little bit more detail on that. So they show perspective views of the signage described in the previous slide. To the left is the primary building address signage, you know, band. You can see in the second image, the illuminated scotch signs that would be located on the building columns. The third image shows the directional signs and Stephen, if you could zoom into that, they're a little bit hard to see and in in this rendering. So it's possible to maybe not. And then the last image to the right shows the bicycle symbol sign, no go so slide over to the next image, it's the directional signage. Okay. Thank you. And then this is a view of the phase two. Go next, there you go. This is the phase two building for tower and it shows the use of the same elements for the building phase one element. Tom will talk more about the landscape. You can see the same treatment of the architecture of the phase, you know, in the phase two building as we described in the phase one building, the transparent ground floor, the decorative rail. On level two, the aluminum fins on level three and that vertical shaft that rises up the tower and then go next. And here you get elevation of building two and the podium of building four, similar to building one, the lobby at the ground floor with the two levels of amenities above. And the same palette of materials used for building four will be used for building one as shown here. And then similar to building one, there are a few deviations we're requesting related to the ground levels and signage for these two buildings. For building four, we're requesting 36 inches for the storefront bulkhead height. For building four is similar to building one, this is due to the grade change across the site. For number six, we're requesting a minimum floor to ceiling height of eight feet for the ground floor. Floor to ceiling heights, this allows the interior ceiling again to line up with the exterior soffit for greater continuity between interior and exterior. Or for number 17, we're requesting a 56 inch high directional sign at the corner of building two. We feel this is an appropriate location for it to maximize pedestrian exposure and pedestrian approach from the two sides. For 18, we're requesting 10 signage sconces distributed on building columns of building four to provide illumination along pedestrian circulation zones. For 19, we're requesting a 21 foot square, a 21 square foot building address sign. For building four to fit with the scale of the building entryways. And for 21, we're requesting a bicycle symbol sign to direct bicyclists to the bike storage access. And for 24, we're requesting to omit parking garage sign as this will be a private parking garage. It will also help avoid confusion that would otherwise result from drivers for the general public who may otherwise try to seek access to the project to park their vehicles. Here we see perspectives of the two signs and building two, which were mentioned on the previous slide. On the right image, you can see the directional signage, calling out the various points of interest in the surrounding area such as the manner contemporary, the Lowe's path station. The goal is to aid and encouraging pedestrian movement through the project as well as the greater journal squared area. And go next. And I think that's it for my testimony.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Handel. If we could, please go back to page 31 on the slideshow. I just have a question on the shadow boxes. So the the glass is set back essentially.
Sure. So in in all residential buildings that use that use glass curtain walls, there are always opaque areas that are also glass. And those can be done either by just painting the back of the glass. Which is a less expensive, you know, but less effective way of actually matching those glasses to each other. So a shadow box actually creates some depth there and that, you know, and the and then a color is placed on the back surface, usually, you know, three or four inches back. Which gives a deeper read there and it actually allows the that spandrel area to have a closer match to the vision glass. So it actually provides a more cohesive, you know, and elegant look to the, you know, to the building.
Okay, um, I think I misspoke. Probably talking now that I, now that I zoom my head into it, um, the metal panels. Do they stick out off of the vision glass, like the vision glass is set back versus the metal panels?
Yeah. So there, so there's vertical, there's vertical fin elements that you that are that are dominant in the, you know, in the renders, you know, protrude out. You know, some number of inches in front of the glass and they actually have slightly different profiles in the different gradient areas. So that that's what gives the different effect and it actually changes as you move around. The building in quite a, you know, beautiful and dynamic way, if I should say so myself, I actually shouldn't. But the, but the the goal was really to create this building that would change and you shimmer slightly as you moved around it and as the sun moved around it as well.
Understood. It's, yeah, it's an interesting look. I'll save my comments, whether it's you know, if I agree with you on the look, but um, the, so the vision glasses set back how far? So it's panels, I I know you stated that, you know, it changes around the building.
Yeah. So it's between, it's between three and six inches.
Okay. So my, that answered my question. My, my concern was, um, you know, how would the windows be maintained? How would they be washed from above? I didn't know how deep those panels were.
Sure. So that there, you know, that, so you know, there's a whole building maintenance system for the building that's mounted on the top of those crowns. With, you know, you know, and the, and those rigs that drop down the building will be continuously engaged. With a series of buttons and tracks which we're working on the engineering design for now. So that, yeah, so that in order to allow for exactly that building maintenance that you're talking about.
Okay, understood. Yeah. My concern was just the depth that, you know.
Sure.
I should would have to reach to those windows.
No, 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 it's not, 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 not excessive, right?
Okay, excellent. Um. I appreciate the detailed presentation once again. That was my only question for you. Anybody else from the board have any questions for Mr. Handel?
I don't.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
My next one, this is Mr. Tom Bauer to present the landscaping plans.
Sure.
I'm afraid you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Thomas Bauer, B A U E R.
Thank you.
Mr. Bauer, good evening. We've qualified you in the past as well. Your license is current tonight?
It is, Chairman. Yes, yes.
Thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you, sir. So we've seen a very thorough introduction of site, both from Len and Gary. So now I would like to talk about the site in a little bit more detail. And as noted in as an objective in the general square 26 RDP, we feel that we have indeed created a meaningful public space. With a strong sense of place and one that complements the architecture, a very handsome architecture as just described by Gary, designed by his team. We've accomplished this with attention to detail and the site features of the art walk. The various pavements, the site furnishings, the lighting, certainly the landscape, but you'll see more of this as we go on here. So to demonstrate, I'll take you for a walk across the site. I'm going to begin on the south side at JFK Boulevard and I'm going to head north. I'll focus on three enlarged plans of the site. And then I'll share several representative perspective renderings of each area. Following that, I'm going to highlight a few of the deviations that we feel are justified. And then I will go upstairs and describe the resident amenity rooftops. I'll discuss the active and passive recreational activities and the green roofs as well. So with that, Stephen, if you go to next slide, very good. Thank you. So here's the first enlargement. This is the south end. You've heard plenty of testimony about the orientation of the site, JFK to the right. So as as we're walking through the site, we're going to walk from JFK heading to the north. As we proceed through this area, we're going to pass Lowe's Theater on the right and approach Lowe's loading dock before we arrive to the area. The activated area that Gary just elaborated on between the south tower and the gallery cafe. So what you see here really vibrantly is is the ground plane, which is is a, it's actually a material that you guys are, your, your board is very familiar with. It's an Endura blend product. Our goal is to create art on the land in the landscape. We know that there are vertical murals on building walls. We see this as a horizontal mural as art within the art walk, where the walk itself becomes the art. So it'll be bands of color. It's going to be thematic throughout the entire public, public plaza. In this area, it's more colorful. It changes a little bit as we go further, but bands of color. All to complement the color scheme of the architecture and to really create interest in the landscape. So that the pedestrian traveling through here finds a unique and interesting space in which to to circulate. In addition to this, what you don't see here, and we'll see a little bit more in in some of the images, is the lighting effect. In this location, we have a thematic lighting scheme, which is a large white globe that will be overhead. In this case, some of it in this area, some of this will be handled by a catenary lights, meaning cable supported lighting above. And as we approach to the south tower, you'll see more of that. With that, Stephen, jump to the next slide, please. Next slide, here we go. You just saw this image. I'm repeating this at the risk of being too repetitive. Gary talked about the activation between the cafe to the right, the gallery activity to the left. But here you can see the overhead catenary lights. Which in the evening would be a wonderful way to light the space in addition to some of the building mounted lighting. And obviously the lighting from the interior is spilling out as well. So we see that we're, this is where we're, we fellas previously spoke about the grade change. We're going up about seven feet from one end of this building up to the next. And in fact, this is as as Len pointed out, this is all rooftop. We've, the area we just left was on grade and from here on out, all the way through toward the amphitheater, we're actually on a rooftop. Now, which lends itself to some different construction details, but we're still carrying the Endura blend throughout. You can see the Tarazo sitting steps as they blend into the grade as the grade is rising. So we have some upper terraces where people can dine and enjoy the outdoors and sitting steps and whatnot. To enjoy your cup of coffee and a, and a sandwich, whatnot, and watch people go by. And and as I always say, the, the, this is a great art out here. There's a lot going on. But what really makes these spaces special always are the people. We all love the people watching. We love to see people circulating through these spaces. So and and amongst all of the nice amenities that we're doing, it's really people that make these spaces special. And we will have plenty of that. And I love the bridges that Gary's designed. They connect us from the recreation deck above the gallery to the second floor deck of the tower. I'll show you a little bit more about that later in the presentation. So next, next slide, Stephen. We're going to jump now to the central area. This is in large planned view, rendered planned view of the center area, kind of the heart of of the, of the whole art walk plaza. For orientation purposes, you see Povonia to the lower level to the right and the road connector over to Van Reipen as well. We have a series of crosswalks to take us from, from the north tower area and the south tower area over to the pedestrian plaza. Len very nicely identified the circulation pattern for the pedestrians. We have a beautiful area, a palette of plant material throughout the plaza. We have some formal trees lining the the eastern side, which is overlooking the path station, path tracks. Which by the way is probably 40 to 50 feet below the grade of this plaza. Which is interesting. So as as such, we provided a couple of areas where we actually provide overlooks so we can look down upon those tracks. We have informal planting, we have sculptural seating, you can see the meandering forms and sculpture. The seating, the planters themselves are sculptural in in terms of its material being custom concrete, a white concrete. Sculpted to look attractive and provide different seating opportunities. They will be lushly planted with various types of plant material so that we have seasonal interest throughout. I'd like to point out, Stephen, if you could, the the area of the north tower that covers the these road connector. As Len pointed out earlier, it was purple graphic. So that that gives us the opportunity to create some great recreation up above and provide some area of covered site area for inclement weather as well. Couple of drop off areas in the, in located in that area. The pavement throughout this area switches from the Endura blend, which ends at the lobby entrance to the south tower. It converts to a concrete paver that in in the total pedestrian area will be a pedestal mounted concrete paver. As we do on many rooftop areas in the, in the location of the vehicular turnabout. Where it's where vehicular in nature, that will be a smaller concrete paper. But still in the same colored tones of the concrete, so it looks continuous throughout the area. It's a very safe pedestrian area because of with the, with the location of the, of the planters and the bollards and the crosswalks. We're providing a safe and enjoyable experience for the pedestrians. So in addition to this, there's plenty of lighting throughout here, as you'll see in a rendering coming up. So Stephen, next slide, please. Again, this is a view, you saw this one, Gary mentioned it showed this one to look at the architecture of the tower. You can see that the clock tower, we have kind of an iconic clock tower as a centerpiece. So people can all tell each other, I'll meet you at the clock tower kind of thing as a, as a feature of the site. The rail lines are to the right. You can see some decorative lighting of what we call reed lights off to the right side. You see the globe lights in this, in this situation, they're pole mounted, arching over top of the walkway. So they kind of guide the pedestrian through the entire pedestrian walk. In the foreground, you can see some of the sculptural seating, the mix of planting. We intend obviously to have some permanent sculpture, but we also hope to have local artists exhibit rotating sculpture throughout the plaza, some within the landscape, some within the hardscape. So again, whatever we can do to activate this, this space, we would like to do and create a wonderful art walk opportunity. Next slide. This is another slide again, we're what we're another view of. Uh, this is another slide again, where what we're another view of of the area, looking to the north just from the roundabout. Uh, we, this is uh, open to cyclists, as you can see the bicycle to the right. Uh, we we're blend. This is really a shared space is roundabout between the vehicle and the pedestrian. Safety of the pedestrian is is of utmost concern for us, so we've addressed that with proper site detailing. Uh, you can see this tree line on the on the right side. Again, that's okay, Stephen, next slide. Same view at but a nighttime view. Uh, so the attention to detail and lighting is something that's very important to us. Uh, with a number of light opportunities, we mentioned the globe light, the read lights, uh, landscape uplighting. You can see some of the detail of the under lighting of the seating elements as well. So and the uh, we we anticipate that in the evening and the nighttime, this will again be a very attractive. Uh, art walk and and uh, opportunity for for put the public to to benefit and enjoy. Next slide. Uh, now we're looking back south and you can see up above, this is the canopy of of uh, of tower of the North Tower. Uh, if we're standing under it, you can see the road connector to the right. Again, some of the sculptural seating, the sculpture itself, this this the uh, globe lights to the left in this location is where the. Path tracks are, uh, so we have some overlook opportunities to look down again upon the tracks. And in the far distance is is the first tower, uh, the South Tower, Tower Number One. Uh, next slide. And we finish up the third and and enlarged area is to the northern portion. Uh, and in this, we again, we're continuing the art walk all the way up to with the beginning of the of the amphitheater. Uh, the amphitheater in terms of grade makes up about eight to ten feet of grade change as we go down. Because as we're going to the north, the grid, as you heard, drops back down toward the lower elevation of Brian Place. In total, there's about twenty seven feet of grade change across the site from the high point at Tower at the South Tower to the low point of Brian Place. Uh, yes, you can see we are negotiating that. It's fully accessible via uh, ramps, ADA ramps. Uh, in addition to the steps that may be more convenient for most pedestrians. Uh, and eventually this terminates down toward the dog park. Uh, we have a leashing area. It's well, it's a fence. There's a little bit of grade change for dogs to to uh, enjoy as well, dogs and their owners. Uh, it's tree lined. Uh, there's pedestrian connection all the way down adjacent to it and connecting down to Brian Place. Where we are actually extending the sidewalk uh, uh, from the existing location to the far end of of our site. So I think uh, uh, this view is looking back from the dog run, which is behind us. Can see the ADA ADA ramps in the foreground and then we're looking directly at the amphitheater. An opportunity to sit and relax, uh, again, public use. You have stairs to the left. Sitting steps for the amphitheater. You can see some of the retaining walls and that help us to negotiate the grade change. And uh, again, we just think it's a very well-designed, beautifully landscaped uh, uh, public space. For our residents and the public in general to enjoy. Excellent. So we we spoke about the deviations. There are a number of deviations here. We'll touch on them briefly. Uh, again, the same numeral cons- concept I to identify them as the other folks have done. The first one, item number three, has to do with a uh, the requirement for gray tinted concrete for all of the sidewalks. And the redevelopment plan, or what we're doing in in the terminology in the redevelopment plan is superior walkways or would be okay. We think that both the endura blend and the concrete pavers are a superior material to the gray concrete. So we are requesting uh, uh, permission to do that. We do have some gray concrete uh, along Brian Place though, as the the public sidewalk. For number eight, the the requirement for uh, evenly spaced trees. We do have evenly spaced trees along the eastern edge, which is overlooking the art plaza. However, the balance of the trees in part due to the cover of the of the canopy of North Tower. In addition to the informal kind of sculptural uh, and artistic landscape. We're proposing to be more informally spaced trees, uh, as opposed to your typical street tree alignment. For number nine, curb for all planters, we are curving and although all of the planters with the exception. Of those right along the eastern edge, uh, if you look closely at those detail, you may have, I should have pointed this out. There are fingers of planting that we would like to be a continuation of the uh, graphic paving pattern. And we would like that to be flush. It's just a design uh, uh, detail that we prefer. So we're suggesting no curbing. Just in that area. Privacy walls, number ten, privacy walls between the zones. Uh, between the zones, there are actually some residential buildings uh, with windows overlooking some of these areas. And we feel it would be detrimental to those homes to build, actually build walls in those areas. So our ref, our preference. Is it for for that reason, not to block windows of air and light, but also for aesthetic reasons, is to provide landscape. In those areas in in lieu of the retaining walls or or screen walls. So landscape uh, in lieu of the walls is is our a preference. Number twelve is the eight foot pedestrian circulation area immediately, as as Stephen is pointing out. We don't need a circulation area there. We it could could happen in the future if necessary. But we are providing circulation on the northern side of that northeast side, uh, as opposed to that location. So because we're providing it there. We really don't need it in the other location. Our preference again, for aesthetic purposes as well, is to provide some attract attractive landscape. We are up to number thirteen, which is similarly in that area is a five foot minimum pedestrian circulation area. We don't need that because that circulation area uh, butts the the new uh, sidewalk along Brian Place. So Brian Place uh, uh, provides the circulation, pedestrian circulation that is necessary. And then adjacent to that would would make sense to provide uh, some shade trees and some landscape as a buffer between the sidewalk and the dog run. Uh, number twenty through twenty five has to do with signage. Uh, 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 there are several locations. Twenty is a request for wayfinding signage. We are requesting two locations for wayfinding signage and the next the next uh, photograph, I'm going to show you what what that might look like. Uh, so wayfinding signage is requested, as is a clock tower uh, uh, along the art walk. Um, again, for for obvious reasons, uh, we think it's an iconic element. It's also going to tell us what time it is, which is wonderful, right? For those who don't have their cellphone or their Apple Watch. Uh, signage, so number twenty two, materiality, that clock tower, uh, as you heard from Gary. Uh, wants to be a glazed tile to complement some of the the features of of the South Tower as well. Uh, that is not a permitted material within the R D P right now. So we're requesting the the opportunity to do that as glazed tile. Uh, the backlit signage, that has to do with the actual clock that's atop the clock tower. We would like to back like that. Backlit let signage is not permitted in the current plan. Uh, and then requested the wayfinding sign in the clock tower. Uh, no monument signs are permitted. We're calling those monument signs. Uh, I think that our redevelopment plan requests for all signs to be building mounted. So these are, these are site site mount signs and and monuments. So next slide, I think it just gives you a little bit more visual on the clock tower. Uh, we saw that in some of the previous images as well. So that's a deviation number twenty two for the materiality of it. And twenty three is again for the backlighting of the of the clock face itself. And twenty and twenty five, you see for the wayfinding sign, couple of, and we think it's a good idea. To provide in a couple of locations throughout the public plaza, some wayfinding sign indicating where Journal Square is. Where Brian Place is and and the different art, the other potential uh, terminations of of the entire art walk. So that pretty much covers the deviations. Um, and lastly, what I'd like to do, I mentioned taking you upstairs to look at the at the rooftops. This is an overall rendering. Uh, of the entire site with the with the rooftops rendered uh, for both the South Tower and the North Tower. Uh, we have two levels of roof deck that that I'll describe in detail here. At the second level above grade, we we have uh, rooftops on both of these buildings. And then for the South Tower, all the way up on the forty eighth floor, we have some some rooftop development. So next slide, Stephen, please. Uh, we'll look closely at the second level. So we'll start with South Tower. Level two, uh, you can see that we have above the gallery, one floor above the gallery is the 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 uh, pool. And the sun deck and some landscape, and there's some cabanas and site furnishings as well. Uh, that's for the residents of the South Tower, and you can see this connected via Gary's two uh, beautiful lightweight bridges. That connect us to the second floor of the South Tower, which is for uh, several uh, areas of interest. We have an outdoor kitchen. We have some, a few lawn panels for casual seating. We have some game tables, uh, some casuals uh, furnishings and and fire bowls. Uh, and uh, and which, all of which is an extension of the interior floor plan. So a wonderful amenity for the South Tower between the passive and the active amenities. Uh, if we jump over to the North Tower in the phase two. Uh, we, again, we have a pool that happens to sit above the over the part that overhangs the connector roads. There's a pool there. And Chase Lounges, uh, wonderful spot with great views from there as well. And then there's a little bit of a grade change actually within the second floor. We come down some steps and an ADA ramp. To a little bit of a lower level on the west side of the North Tower, where again, we have some some dining opportunities, some barbecue grills and. Outdoor dining, some furnishing opportunities for casual seating, a little bit of a lawn panel. Uh, and then there's a little bit of a green roof as well. So that's it for the second floor, but two very nice rooftops amenities at the second floor. Uh, we have a view of this. This is looking at the of the rooftop of the gallery building. All the way at the bottom of the sheet, you can see the entrance to the garage. And to the left of that, you can see the the foyer, the lobby to building one. And so you get a feel for relationship uh, to what the second floor looks like, the connection to the pool and pool deck. Via the two bridges which connect over to the second floor of of the uh, the amenity space uh, which wraps the tower. And then this is the east side, uh, again, overlooking the railroad tracks. From here, we'll be looking down at the pass station as well. In the foreground, you can see some of the dining area. We have some turf area uh, with some casual seating, gaming tables. And then some other uh, sofa seating and casual furnishings. So very nice outdoor area uh, for the residents. Then if we jump up to the Sky Lounge on the forty eighth floor, all the way up top. The views from here, obviously tremendous of the Jersey City skyline, Manhattan skyline. We'll see the Statue of Liberty, Arizona Bridge from here. There's some green green roof planting and primarily it's casual seating. Uh, and the opportunity to get out of doors and and see this dramatic view. Um, so that that's pretty much uh, what we have here. Uh, and I think that we have, in closing, I think I think that we've met the. The requirements of the the goals and objectives of of the uh, of the redevelopment plan. Uh, we've created a wonderful art walk on a great on a ground plane. And we've created some wonderful spaces up on the rooftop for our residents. So all in all, we think it's a terrific project. Uh, one will be very successful. And that is it. That is the termination of my presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. We appreciate it and uh, the details always appreciated. Um. If we could, I only have one question. If we could go back to page forty eight on the slideshow. And my question is, um, what delineates the. Vehicular roundabout from pedestrian access there? I I did see in uh, on page fifty that there were a few bollards along the way.
Yes.
And it's that it's. It it's just not clear to pedestrians that they shouldn't be walking through that roundabout.
Yeah, well, actually, in reality, uh, Chairman, we actually think that I consider this a shared space. Uh, where pedestrians can circulate through it by nature of the of the ground plane treatment. It's it's it serves as a traffic calming uh, element. Uh, there will be minimal amount of cert of vehicular circulation through here, given that it's just a termination. Uh, it's it's, there is a drop off area and pickup for lobby. There will be some FedEx trucks and some service vehicles. But it's not a through street. It's uh, so it will not be heavily circulated. There will not be a high volume of traffic through here. Uh, pedestrians, as you're walking from from one from one end by Journal Square up through here, you're going to. Be traveling along the crosswalk area as anyway, Stephen, if you can point out that that direction. As you're coming through, pass through the South Tower. Stephen, you there? Uh, there we go. If we travel from this, coming through the South Tower up up by the crosswalk. And continue through, we're going to be bypassing that roundabout. So that would be the primary circulation path for pedestrians. However, I think that some pedestrians will wind up, well, honestly, walking through there, but I think the nature of it with the ground plane treatment. Uh, it will alert the the driver of the vehicles that this is in large part a pedestrian space. Yeah. If we determine, there's a term in Europe called a vuner, uh, Chairman, if you're familiar with that, which is which. Is which means it's a shared space and yet Europeans are very big on this kind of thing, where the car and the and the kind of pedestrians interact. And what we've described it in the past as a space that's primarily for pedestrians, where the vehicle is the invited guest. Is the term we've used before. So we really want this to feel like it is a pedestrian space, although we don't think it's going to get a lot of pedestrian activity. If this is making any sense for you, hopefully it does.
It is, and I'm from Jersey and. Cars don't mix well with pedestrians in Jersey. Um, I wish they did. I just don't think that's the case and I. Don't want to blame drivers for that, but I I just think uh. You know, shared spaces between cars and pedestrians to me don't mix. Um, I I would feel a lot more comfortable if if there was some kind of. Uh, visual cue, being that the. I I understand the flow and and. You know, the color choices and the different shadings of the the sidewalk and the vehicular roundabout. You want that to flow all the way through the site and.
Yeah. And that really, I think that materiality of the of the pavement, the concrete pavers and the banding is really that visual cue. To say, hey, to the driver, this is something very different. Slow down, take it easy. It's not an asphalt paved road.
I'm, I'm more concerned about alerting pedestrians that they're entering a shared space that is going to have cars. There.
And I might point out also that again, because of the nature of the garage entry. The great majority of cars of for these residents will be going in there, making that right hand turn before we ever get to that spot. So, which will help as well.
But that'll be your primary drop off for car sharing services, correct?
It would be, yes. Yes, it would.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern. Um. You know, as a driver is dropping a passenger off and they're. Looking to make sure that that passenger tipped them on the way out, that they're not paying attention going around that circle.
And Mr. Chair, I actually, I I just wanted to support what you're saying. There, we do have. A similar situation at the end of Hudson and Co., if you recall. Um, you know, where people are drives, it's a shared space. There's pedestrians. And there's a roundabout at the end there where people can turn back and 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 I. I agree with you. There's, it's always scary to come out of that place and uh, you know, you know, it's like, is it a car space? Is it, can we walk and um, yeah, I I was thinking the exact same thing when you pointed that out.
Believe me, I wish we lived in a different world where this wasn't a concern for me. Um, I I just, I I think somehow there should be some kind of visual cue for pedestrians, whether it's. You know, I understand there's a different paver in that area. I just don't know if that's enough. And um.
Mister, Mister Chair, can can I jump in if we, can we zoom into that circle? Because I think we have a bunch of the things that you're you're looking for. So Stephen, can you zoom into the plan? Because I think there are a number of of bollards that actually, so if you look. If you look at the black dots, you know, keep keep zoomed in, you need to stay, because they're hard to see on the plan. So we have, we have bollards that actually will keep you, um, added a visual evidence of curbing there. Um, all along um, the pedestrian sequence there. You have the crosswalk there and then you cross, you cross across crosswalk, you see those bollards again. And then um. Um, um, Tom had pointed out that sculptural seating elements there. Um, so you can see that that there and so that actually creates that visual. Um, more than a vis- visual, it's a physical boundary um, between that turnaround. Um, and you know, and the art walk there. And then um, on the, where it says uh, clock tower in words. There are another three bollards that are actually there that um, you know, that um, you know, that basically. Um, you know, um, to you know, define that as well as the landscape um, that you can see to the, you know, to the north there. Um, and that goes along also with the um, with the with both the color. Change of the, you know, of the paving uh, there, but also the, you know, you know, Tom. Um, you know, it just in the interest of brevity, you know, like so basically throughout the pedestrian areas of paving, you know, it's a tube paver. Um, in the vehicular areas, it it's an eight by eight inch paper. Um, so that the difference is stronger than, you know, is easy to see on this, on this graphic. Um, so. So I I think we um, in actuality of, you know, um, have created um, strong separation and visual cues. Um, um, for um, drivers and pedestrians um, to be able to follow. As well as physical separations, you know, with with those, you know, with those bollard sculptural planters, um, landscape elements and changes of paving.
Yeah, I saw the the bollards on page fifty. Um, I didn't realize there were so many. On that uh, that stretch. Um.
Sir, are those white lines not a raised curve? Is that all flush?
They they are flush on the right side by the lobby. They are flush. Uh, where they are, where the planter is, that that is. Uh, where they are, where the planter is, that that is a curb height on the on the inside of the drive and it's a seat wall on the outside.
Okay, so. There's no seat wall on the inside of the uh the roundabout.
That's correct. That's curb height.
Okay.
And then it rolls up into a seat height on the pedestrian side.
And what about on the lobby side, it's flush?
Yes, sir.
Both of those lines?
Yes, both lines are flush. And the lines are simply to delineate the drop off area.
And all the way around, when you come towards that garage entrance, the other way down, I guess. That stays flush until you get to.
That's correct. That's correct. The seat wall is raised. Yes.
And that's the point of entrance to the lobby?
That's the. You can see the lobby there. Yep, that is the lobby door right there. Yes.
So ride sharing is definitely going to happen in that turnabout. Is that what we anticipate?
Yes.
And those larger circles. Those bollards as well?
No, those are lights. Those are globe lights that are building mounted. Part of the thematic lighting scheme that we developed.
Okay. Okay, understood. Thank you, sir. All right, anybody else? Any questions for Mr. Bauer?
No.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Bauer. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Introduce Charles Height for planning testimony.
Hello, good evening again.
Good evening, Mr. Height, and let's uh just let the record show that Mr. Height's been sworn in, uh is still under oath and is still qualified tonight.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so we're setting up the slides to just focus everyone's attention on the deviations. I'm really doing this in summary fashion just to help the board understand how we're. Uh, trying to justify uh based on what type of deviation that these these can be granted under. Um, much of the facts have already been established by uh Mr. Savino, Mr. Handel, Mr. Bauer. So I don't want to repeat um everything that has been said, but I just want to add to it and and help clarify for. For the justification from a planning scope. Um, so again, um, we spoke about the shape factor in the subdivision application that was dealt separately. We can advance. Onto the next slide. So i- in this first uh image, we're dealing with the reference to the turning radii occurring in these two, three locations. Um, we discussed and and really just. Quickly covered many of the traffic calming elements that we think we're elegantly incorporating into this overall site plan. That's in including the use of crosswalks, bollards, uh pack raid. Uh sidewalk or walkways, so no separation of vehicular lane and travel lane as well as the graphic sidewalk. Um, all those elements um based on our experience um with this connector road. And the circulation that's going to occur here, um we believe do uh aim at the intent of providing traffic calming um elements. Not necessarily only with just the turning radius. So that's part of the justification. Um, I do think it still provides adequate circulation for emergency vehicles, trucks, as well as passenger vehicles and vans. Um, in in this instance, I believe this is advancing um under the. Flexible standard where the benefits do outweigh the detriments uh for these locations. So this is a a slide in the set of deviations that we felt were really nuanced with respect to the site plan as it meets the buildings. Um, item two or deviation two is specific to uh the overhead walkways. Uh, what was also mentioned, um just to reiterate, is that these walkways do provide direct access to the amenity level for the residential. Users of building one. So that's the intent to to provide them. They also do provide the additional building egress. Um, they are integrated in the overall design. They're open air. Um. And they don't distract from the art walk. Another element to um prohibiting elevated crosswalks or overhead walkways. Is that it divorces the activity of the residential tenants of the building from the street level. That is not the case with this proposed design. Clearly, you could see the cafe, the gallery, the art walk itself. All intending to proactivity life and and attracting pedestrians through this area. So again, we are proposing the overhead walkways, but we're meeting the intent of activating the streetscape at the ground level. Um, given that, I believe that the benefits do outweigh the detriments um with respect to this deviation. Staying on this slide, um I'm referencing deviations five, seven and eleven. Uh, these are all with respect to the design of the facades of the buildings. Uh, for building one, it occurs on the the northwest side being shown here. Um, for building fifteen, it occurs in one segment on on the north, sorry, I said building fifteen. Uh, building four, uh it occurs in the one section on on north of five and uh north of building four. These are critical areas for backup house. Uh, the redevelopment plan tries to limit back of house on street frontages. In this instance, these locations. Do have frontage on the connector roadway and and pedestrian walkways, so they technically are frontage. Um, so we're kind of limited in a sense of being able to provide that loading um stairwell access. Other sort of backup house requirements uh along the the frontages that need access to the to the right of ways. So that's the need for for these deviations um where they occur. There's also a limit on the the linear frontage um for for the back of house requirements. Uh, and also the percentage, no more than fifteen per percent and no more than thirty consecutive linear feet. So we're highlighting the instances where where those deviations occur in this image. Um, these are also the same locations where the glad, the glazing requirements are not being met with respect to eighty percent glazing. Um, where we're providing less than that minimum requirement. Um, as it relates to uh. The uh so that's that's uh items five and seven, as it relates to the orientation of. Uh, the gallery building, which is located on on the view on the lower right hand of the screen. The specific requirement with respect to what we're referencing is deviation eleven is the setback or alignment of that building with. The other buildings, you can see that drawn um with the dashed red line. And we're setting back from them. Um, that one achieves a few few elements here from a logistical standpoint with the driveway access. It provides some visibility for vehicles entering and exiting as well as the distance needed to accommodate that movement. And we felt it didn't deter, given that we're creating this sense of place with the architecture and the and the landscape architecture. From the overall cohesive design of of this zone. Um, again, these are really nuanced aspects where the buildings meet the ground. We believe the design of the overall building floor plans and the landscape architecture is um consistent. And the benefits outweigh the detriment. With respect to uh item or deviation fifteen as we're referencing. Again, this is with um we're with respect to uh requirements for loading and driveway access. No front in front out loading that occurs on building one uh and four. Um, for building one. The circulation movement is still off the right of way in the um turnabout. So uh it 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 isn't the main corridor, which is the intent in trying to prohibit front in front out. Because that requires circulation within the main right of way. We're providing that still off the main right of way. Um, with building the with with the loading dock on building four. Uh, again, that that will require movement in the right of way, but mo- the majority of that movement will be in the connector right of way. The connector road, which is not um a a through road, it's not part of the overall network. It's really just provide mobility through this site for for vehicles and emergency vehicles and and service vehicles. The last item is uh on the draw on the um. Gallery building. Um, this is the driveway aisle width for the driveway for the the parking deck. Again, this is the only uh access to the low grade parking. Um, that parking is uh provided with a two way movement. And we are trying to orient that two way driveway within is an eighteen foot or twenty three foot wide. Driveway at this uh connector road to create a a bit of a a regular intersection, if you will. If you will, a four way intersection here. So um that's the last deviation um with respect to that slide. Again, those are design aspects. We believe the intent um is being met and.
Mr. Height, if we could hold you up one second. Our attorney has been kicked off Zoom for some reason.
Oh, no.
Uh, I just want to get him back online before we continue.
That was me. I kicked him off. I was gonna ask you, that was you, uh Mr. McCann?
I think it was. It's payback from his computer. He threatened to throw it through the wall a few meetings ago.
I remember, yeah.
Yeah, that was a good one. Let's uh.
I thought McCann would have been kicked off because his hour and a half is uh about up.
Way over there. Those were. Those were all alternate facts. We knew that.
It only feels like an hour to me.
It's all relevant, right?
Yeah, yeah, alternate facts. I don't know, maybe Santos off the clock. Think we're gonna have to take Santo to the Apple store tomorrow.
Maybe he can join by phone, Chairman.
Yeah, let me give him a call.
Excellent, yeah.
I sent him another Zoom meeting invite, so I don't know if that'll help.
He's back.
Uh, nice.
Oh, boy.
All right. Waiting on you, Santo. Uh. All right, you were just, I think, just wrapping up.
Trying to wrap up.
Oh, you know what it is? Ten forty.
Yeah. We'll get there. We'll get there. We're almost there.
So I did wrap up the deviations on this slide and there's only a a few more slides, so. I understand that it's ten forty. Um, this will be quick uh slide, the uh the mechanical rooms.
Take your time, Charles.
Thank you, Sam. The mechanical rooms on the upper floors of of both structures are screened with the the metal louvers. That you see in that uh cap of the building. It's the one portion of of the telescopic equipment for these towers. Um, that is required to to be free moving to help balance the the weight of the structure at that elevation. So uh this is um almost a physical issue, um given the height of these structures. Um, but from a design standpoint, you won't be able to see that McCann, that piece of equipment at the grade. At near the building and from far away. This is the image where you have the main bulk of the building and that well defined metal louvered cap. Um, that that uh telescopic will only appear like a like a small tassel at the top. Um, so that's that's the the benefits of the overall design outweighing the detriment. For for not screening that element of the mechanical equipment. Advance.
Stephen, next slide. Thank you.
Okay, so several of these we've already covered. Um, but just to be be specific, the um. Four and six relate to um the the uh storefront bulkheads. And six relates to the minimum ground to floor ceiling heights. Um, buildings. Uh, two, one and four uh or or elevations here have um. A minimum of sixteen for phase one and a minimum eighteen for phase two, so those are four and two feet. Uh, of difference than the minimum required of twenty feet. Again, we're working with topography here, so we've tried to meet the intent of a a strong. At grade storefront with the glazing. Um, but we are also dealing with with different floor planes and different entrances um along that topography. So that creates the technical deviations that are being sought sought with items four and six with respect to the bulk, the window base. And and the overall ground floor ceiling height for the ground floor. Um, the next three or four rather relate to the signage. Um, so this was a good slide to introduce the signage. That's actually uh as Mr. McCann referenced, the bulk of the deviations. Um, again. Where we're referencing um multiple signage for uh wayfinding. As well as the various uses along the walkway. Again, we have cafes, uh retail spaces, lobbies. Um, as well as the gallery um along this walkway. So we are proposing uh multiple signage at the lobbies um where they occur at corners throughout this walkway. Uh, as well as the main entrances. Uh, and then also what's called out in item eighteen specifically. Are uh blade signs um to promote a sense of of place, um a a consistent banner, if you will. Along this uh storefront. Um, these signs are also illuminated, um which is another uh specific deviation. Being requested. Uh, again, all the signage here has really been developed as sort of a package. Um, that's integrated in the variety of the building, the variety of the uses um in in effectively a cohesive manner. So I do believe that the proposed signage um presents benefits that outweigh the detriments. Um, specifically with with the the wayfinding signage as well, um that requires the additional number of signs deviation. Believe that was it for this slide. Um.
I think, Charles, you may have covered that this slide with your previous testimony.
Correct. The 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 next slide is just an another iteration of the uh facades of the building where the signage deviations occur. Um, but all these have been addressed. The only one is is item twenty four on this slide that's new. Um, there's no proposed parking sign. Um, the requirement speaks to an international parking sign and symbol being provided for garage entrances. That's really intended for public garages that are accessed by people not familiar with the area. This garage is intended to be a private garage serving the building. Um, which will be gated and and accessed with with uh with an automatic access system. So um we are actually reducing the number of signs um and people who live in these buildings will know where to entrance. Enter the garage at that location. So again, that's the only new deviation being introduced with this slide. Um. References item number twenty four. Here are just two examples of of the types and locations of signs. On the left, we have uh an additional. Um, sign for the gallery, which occurs at a corner location. Uh, which exceed the one maximum sign requirement. On the right is example, it's a little bit difficult to see if we're able to zoom in. This is the uh what we're calling the art walk directional. It's a wayfinding sign. Clearly, it's helping to orient pedestrians and provide direction. This is our consistent wayfinding signage that is signed on other locations um throughout these series of buildings. This is our consistent wayfinding signage that is signed on other locations um, throughout these series of buildings. This set of deviations with, is with respect to a lot of the landscape architecture. We just heard from Mr. Bauer, who I think really covered in, in good detail, the intent. The uh. The two elements I just wanted to hone in here are with respect to the screening, it's items um. Excuse me one moment. It's items ten, twelve and thirteen on the left. These are the required sidewalks and wall. Uh, along this zone floor, along these um, property boundaries on Bryant Place. Um, as you heard. We're providing landscaping in these areas, dense evergreen landscaping that will provide that buffer, um, just in a softer, uh, more of a landscape, a natural landscape setting. Um, we are reducing the intensity of this area with. Outdoor walkways um, and, and the dog parks. That's somewhat more of a passive daytime use. Um, there's no buildings. There's no backup house in this area. There's no loading in this area. So there's really little to buffer. Um, with respect to intensity. So I think we're meeting the intent of the requirements here. Um, and we also provide that pedestrian mobility along the north. Of the property. Um, there were. The other set um, that really just, just to quickly run through um, the, the type of sidewalk being a gray tinted concrete. We're requesting a very um, thoughtful uh, graphic style that, that we, we heard from Mr. Bauer. I think that's meeting the intent to be art walk while still providing a suitable material for the, the walkway. Um, we heard about the street trees, providing that row of street trees along the northern portion, which is also the pedestrian um, walkway as well. Um, but throughout the site, some of the limitation is that this is also the deck above a parking level. So there's very little depth to accommodate a street tree adequately throughout much of, of the plaza area. Um, to the north of, of the North Tower shown here. That's the, 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 the street tree planting deviation being requested in item eight. And then lastly, um, item nine is with respect to curbing um, with, with masonry uh, materials. Again, a lot of the curbing um, or at-grade uh, crossing um, is really integrated in the design of the building where you have. Seamless transition from walkway to landscaping. It's, it's a, it will be a visual uh. Limitation for these areas. Um, but again, that, that's going to be incorporated into the overall design um, of the walkway. We have seat, seat bench seating um, in the form of benching, which is another physical limitation to some of the landscaping areas. Uh, but again, it's, it's all part of the cohesive design um, that is attractive and, and it kind of creates that sense of place here along the walkway. Um, so again, all these. We thought that there are benefits from this proposed landscaping architecture design that outweigh the detriments um, with respect to the intent. Uh. Lastly, there are just a few miscellaneous signage requirements that we're going to run through. Um, they really do relate to the, the wayfinding monument signs in the clock tower. Um, item twenty. Uh, is that science should be attached to the building. Uh, and item twenty-five is no monument signs. These two deviations are both related to the wayfinding sign um, where we have located um, along the walkway. Again. It's meant to identify the building, help people, visitors from either traveling by car or and um. By foot to, to know that they're at this, this location. Um. The items twenty-two and twenty-three are with respect to the. Clock tower. Um, again, what was references in the material being tiles. Um, we thought it was a really nice way to separate the clock tower um, from the other materials used in the buildings. Um, make it stand out. It's still a durable material and, and this is the design being proposed with, with those tiles. Um, and also the, the backlighting of, of the clock itself. Um, where, where no light backlighting is, is permitted. Um, so again, this only. Uh, on this clock tower with respect to the, the backlighting. And I believe uh, that's it with respect to the specific deviations uh, in terms of, of where they fall with respect to which test they advanced. Um, as it relates to the negative criteria, uh, and this is my conclusion. Um, we are in zone ten, the cultural arts district. This zone has been crafted for this property. And the intended use of, of creating connection as well as development within a block of the Journal Square path station. Um. I, I don't want to recite the, the objectives. We identified fifteen objectives. In the statement of principal points that this project is specifically advancing. Um, and I do believe that the, the proposed redevelopment um, works within that. Uh, again, some of the details or, or more, more notable details is we're making advantage of the, the bonus. Um, with the open space um, contribution and the affordable housing requirements um, that's permitted in this district. Uh, in this zone, we're providing the connector right-of-way, the pedestrian um, right-of-way access along the art walk. Uh, and, and those are all specific elements uh, that are being incorporated into this design from the redevelopment plan requirements. Um, that's my testimony. I realize it's ten fifty-three, so if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Height. We appreciate it. Um, yeah, I have no questions. Mr. Height, anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. I see a number up already.
Promoted Sarah.
And if you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hands.
Can you stop sharing the screen, please?
Yeah, can we stop that screen share?
Hey Sarah, let me just swear in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Yep. Swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
And for the record, could you state it by your name, please, and give us your home address?
My name is Saro Cootree. Uh, S is in Sam, A R O. Last name is Cootree, C U T R I. I own eight-ten Pavonia Avenue. In Jersey City. Yep.
Mr. Cootree, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
All right, very good. Um, I'm probably the property that's gonna be most affected by this project. I want to go on record and first say, I, I think. In spirit, this is actually a pretty good project and I'm. Um, I want to support, you know, many, many facets of it, but um. There are particular components of this that I, that I object to. Number one is uh, as it relates to the subdivision. Um, reconfiguration. I guess it's the first point on the agenda here. I know it was broken into two pieces. The property um. Where they're, where they're creating the phase one side of the project and phase two, that property line essentially goes right in the middle. Of where my property is. My property is eight-ten Pavonia Avenue, which is the terminus of Pavonia and where that corner will come. So my house will now become. A corner lot. Um, I was in front of this panel about a year and a half ago and I got approval to do a four-story building that's gonna take the entirety of that property from. The ten-foot setback on Pavonia to the rear yard setback. And what they're proposing here has a pool that's gonna wrap around and essentially a butt the, the front of my building. So. Um, this, this plan looks like it's, the, the, the separation of those two phases looks like it's done at where they're, where they're presuming my backyard is on that property. But that's actually gonna be a building. So essentially out my window, my window is gonna be, are going to be blocked by that pool. That has the roadway that goes underneath it on building four on that phase two part of the project. Um, and my, my unit, my building will look directly. I mean, literally outs, out the window into the pool area of this building. So it doesn't really accommodate for what is being planned on my particular property and what's been approved by this, by this board.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, Mr. McCann, are you uh, aware of this?
Uh, I am not, Mr. Chairman.
If, if I may, just to clarify, um, eight-ten Pavonia uh, is actually on the north side? Is that correct of Pavonia Avenue?
It's the terminus that essentially abuts that, what is the existing parking lot right now. You would make the left turn. To go, to head around towards building four right now. My building is the building that would be at the end there. And the way that the building is designed on the plans that I've watched today. There's a, there's a part of that building four that juts out over the streetway and wraps around my property and would essentially abut my building. Which is proposed to be a four-story building currently.
Okay, I, I, I know you've made reference of the pool. Um, that's the, the gallery building to the south. So I just wanted to confirm that the pool.
Isn't there a pool in building four as well? Excuse me. There's an amenity space that abuts that goes out, juts out over the roadway as proposed. And I believe that there's a pool in the renderings that I saw. There was also a pool that was going to be placed there as well. Is that not correct, Mr. McCann?
Can we, I, I think probably we should pull up one of the. Um, one of the slides so we can try to figure out.
There you go. That's the one. That's the pool right there. The upper level pool sun deck. So my property is right there, right? And I'm proposing a building that goes all the way to my property line. So essentially, you're gonna enclose in the corner of my property line and have. A pool deck wrapping around in front of a building that's gonna have windows on either side of it. Um, so I have an objection here of where you decided to break. Phase one and phase two is in the middle of my property, which goes from where these blue chairs are. Um, along that, along, I guess that's the south wall of the North Tower there and the rounded corner of that pool. That's going to be a building. It's gonna be a four-story building that takes from Pavonia to the rear. Yard. So you're essentially enclosing me in. It's a very strange choice for what you did. I think you probably did it because there's a, an existing backyard there now. But that's going to be a building with rental unit with, with, you know, units in it, apartment units in it. So I'd be happy to talk to you guys about what I'm proposing after the case. Charles is familiar with my project. He was actually my engineer on that, on, on my, on that project as well. On my planning witness on that project. So we can discuss it another time, but I'm gonna be vehemently opposed to this idea of. Wrapping that pool around what's gonna be an existing building there.
Understood, sir. Um. Mr. McCann was.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, we were not aware. Um. Of the approval that this gentleman received. Um. I, I imagine what we should do is take a look at the approval and take a look at our project and have a discussion with this gentleman to. Um, and, and take a look at his approval mainly, just to, to. Not doubting him, but just to see that, that. His approval does in fact butt up against. Uh, the pool area. I understand the gentleman's comment. Um, completely. I think Charles probably does too. I don't know that I can do anything about it right now, though.
Right. Well, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive of all of this work. I think it's well, well overdue and, and I'm very excited about it. Just this particular component of the project is, is just completely disagreeable to me. And I would imagine some of my neighbors, but. What's also the setback on that uh, between these buildings and those and my, my lot there? Because it's very hard to see here. Is there any setback or are you literally building to the property line there? Do you know?
So yes, uh, we do know. Um, Gary or.
We're, we're, we're three feet off of the setback line. And this is all based on the redevelopment plan and what it allows for.
So Stephen, you haven't been sworn in yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, so either we can swear Stephen in. Or Gary, you can explain the setback.
Reiterate, uh, Stephen, what Stephen just mentioned. So basically there's. In the redevelopment plan, there's a three-foot setback required. And then there's, and then there's a low building element. Um, which is where the, 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 you know, the pool and terraces are. And then there's a, and then there's a twenty-five foot setback from that. You know, from that element, all of, of which is in the zone ten redevelopment. I think in, in, in. And I, I would agree that we should look at the approval because if that approval is granted, that would be giving approval for legal windows. On a property line, which would be a very unusual thing for. Any municipality to allow.
Okay. You, you can look at it. It's there. Eight-ten Pavonia Avenue. The approval was done in November of twenty twenty. You know, I would just make one last point. I know we're running out of time here, but the, the original twenty-sixty Journal, Journal Square Plan. At the terminus of Pavonia has essentially that turnaround that is straight off. What you're doing is bending everything to the left sort of. Coming up Pavonia and then towards the left. And even the way that the property lines are drawn, it's on, it's on uh, map two of the site phasing of the twenty-sixty plan. Um, essentially, your building four should stop at the, at the corner of my building, but you're jetting it out into the roadway. And you're using that roadway space that wasn't contemplated by the initial, initial twenty-sixty plan. I'm supportive of much of this, like I said. That particular component where you're, you're taking that building and moving it over a roadway. And like putting a pool over a roadway and around my building is the part that I personally object to. Um, but I'm happy to talk to you guys offline. Um. I can make myself available. So that's my comment. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. All right, if we could, let's move on with public comment. We still see a number of hands raised. Once again, comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
J C Fablab has joined. Hello.
Hi, Eric. If you could turn your video on. All right, great. I see you. I hear you. I just want to swear in. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you're gonna give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state it by your name and give us your address, please?
It's Eric Nadler, E R I C, N A D L E R, one sixteen Boreham Ave, Jersey City.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. We have three minutes for you.
Okay. Yeah, um, I just uh, all the traffic into this um, into this complex is gonna flow from Tonley Avenue, correct? Pretty much vehicular traffic, bicycle traffic.
Yes.
Okay. Um, there's no designated bike lanes whatsoever. There's no like separate bike lanes in that area. And um. I'm curious about. Uh, what the traffic studies have been done um, to accommodate. Um, you know, really even just meal delivery for four thousand people in this small area of the small two-lane road. Um, in the back of a already overcrowded Journal, uh, JFK Boulevard. Um. That was one question. Another question is just about uh, the amount of green space versus striped concrete, which looks lovely in a plan, but um. In reality, is not gonna provide any drainage or any um, green space. That's my second question.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Um. Counsel, you meet the green space requirements, correct? With the uh. The building open space, the, the roof decks.
The, the project does. I mean, I'll, I'll defer to uh. To architect or landscape architect, but there's no specific percentages of green space that are required. One of the goals and intent is to provide an art walk, which involves. Providing walkways with green space, but we've met all those requirements in this redevelopment plan.
Okay, thank you, counsel. All right, once again, uh, anybody that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Nathan has joined the panelists.
Hello, my name is Nathaniel Jones. I live at one-four-three Van Ripen Avenue.
Let me just swear you in if you could raise your right hand.
Yep.
Do you swear any testimony that you've given that you've already given is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have three minutes for you.
So uh, my property is, I live on the uh, top floor apartment of a two-story building that's at the end of Van Ripen Avenue. And that abuts right up to, I believe it was building two. Um. So I am somewhat concerned about the height of the building and it being that close, but I see the need for the extra development there and the additional. Public space. I have three concerns I'd like to raise. Uh, the first is that it looks like the plan does not include any affordances for affordable housing. Uh, the second is that. This plan takes away one of the largest public parking lots in the Journal Square area and replaces it with fully private parking. That's not accessible to the public. So I could anticipate that just to make the parking situation worse. And third. I'm concerned about uh, the green space and light pollution, as Eric had mentioned. I'm concerned about uh the green space and light pollution, as Eric had mentioned.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Um, Mr. Chairman, there's no uh requirement that this project include affordable housing. Um again, the focus on the project is providing the open space and the art walk. Um I I forget what, oh, as far as the public parking lot, that public parking lot is actually an existing non-conforming use. The redevelopment plan does not in any way provide for public parking on this property. The property is now zoned for residential development with parking only as an accessory use for the residential development. So we're actually eliminating an existing non-conforming use by eliminating that parking deck. Um that's again, one of the goals of the redevelopment plan. Uh because this project is so close to the Journal Square Path Station. Um the concept in the redevelopment plan, and I guess Charles could talk about also if we need to, is um there's there's no minimum parking requirement at all. We're actually providing more parking than required.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Uh I see our next speaker is uh promoted. We could have him sworn in.
Hey, do you want me to swear in? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could just state by your name for the record and give us your home address, please?
My name is Evan Tranfader. Uh my address is two-hundred-seventy-eight Magnolia Avenue in Jersey City. Uh two-seventy-eight Magnolia Avenue is attached to two-hundred-eighty-two Magnolia Avenue. Together, they're known as Magnolia Terrace condominiums. It's marked on the architectural drawings adjacent. It's adjacent to building two in the plan. Uh specifically, our backyard comes up against building two, which for the most part is fine. And I'm also very supportive of the project and really excited about the addition of open space into the neighborhood and the amenities that is bringing to our neighborhood. Uh there are a couple of items I just wanted to highlight. The first is that we have a mature tree that's coming right up against our property line. I noticed in the architectural plans when I reviewed them that many trees in the area were marked either as to be preserved and protected or to be removed. And our mature tree in the backyard was not marked as either. And I'd like to have it be known that it should be preserved and protected uh to the extent that it can be, including its root system, which potentially runs under the parking lot behind it, although I can't confirm that not being an arborist myself. Um Our backyard will also be enclosed by the look of it. Right now, our backyard is fenced in with a chain link fence uh and with gate access. We have a padlock in our chain link fence to have access from concourse west into our backyard. And the architectural plans calls for a proposed concrete retaining wall with fence atop. I noticed uh there, I didn't find designs in the architectural plans, although it's visible on slide thirty-two of your presentation as that uh it looks like a red tinted concrete wall with vertical stripes. Uh So we will be losing access to our backyard from concourse west with that design unless there's some other accommodation that I'm I'm not aware of. And so there's the tree, there's the access. My third concern would be if drainage was considered that where previously the chain link fence was very open and would allow water to run off from our backyard. Uh does, I know you guys considered stormwater runoff extensively, but our property drainage may also be impacted by being fully enclosed by non-permeable concrete. So I just wanted to bring those items to your attention.
Thank you, sir. Um that tree is on your property?
Yes.
It's property. Okay, um. Counsel, is anybody aware of taking down any trees that aren't on your property?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
No plans to take trees down that are not on our property.
No, I I certainly wasn't accusing you of trying to take it down. I just want to make sure that it will be preserved, including with this concrete wall that may run over its roots that uh that be taken into consideration.
Absolutely, counsel. You could uh find that reasonable, correct?
We can take that into consideration. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and uh as far as the drainage goes, um uh are there any French drains along that wall, anything? Uh I know there's a massive stormwater, you know, management plan here, but uh that's a concern. That's a concern for that property owner.
Uh I I would have to defer to uh to Mr. Len Savino regarding that. I'm I'm not sure. I mean, I know we did. We've complied with every requirement from the M U A. Um we've spoken to them about the the drainage uh plan, Jersey City Engineering, so um I don't I don't know what impact it might have on another property, though, at this point in time.
Yeah, we've accounted for um the development area, and we do know that the sheet flow does head in that direction. I I uh with respect to offside flow coming into our property. Um I think we would have to take a look at how that actually happens and how it will happen in the proposed condition to see what is really happening there with that flow, um whether it's something that could be accommodated into something nearby and collected and conveyed into the system or back into the the city system itself. Um so it does seem like we need to take a look at that um and have a a clear understanding of how much flow you're actually talking about that comes into our property. I mean, typically, properties are supposed to maintain their own stormwater on their own sites and uh which is what we're doing. Um and obviously, if there's an existing condition here that there's flow coming offside into our site, we'd have to look at that as a special condition, I think.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, uh anybody else for public comment? Once again, if you'd like to comment on this application, uh you can raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Dear Chair, I see no more public. I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Uh Tanya is listed as the planner here.
Yeah, Chris, I'm filling in for Tanya. She was not feeling well, so.
Okay.
I've been instructed to make comments for Director Marion. Um uh give me one second. Tanya instructed me to uh discuss her staff uh comments um and uh her conditions. Um In Tanya's staff report that's listed on the Jersey Open Data Portal, uh she states the current application having already entered into an into and executed the redevelopment agreement has already met a required condition of approval. That being said, um she wanted me to read into record her staff uh conditions. Um within, number one, within one year of the applicant's receipt of the last certificate of occupancy, phase one, prior to his filing of an applicant.